Yes, Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
All right, moving on to presentations, we have a Employee of the Month. This would be Ms. Lachey.
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, we have a nice cushion down here to stand on. This is nice.
Ooh.
So, good afternoon, Mayor and Commission. I am Lachey King, Human Resources Generalist, and we have a wonderful Employee of the Month presentation for you today. This employee not only goes above and beyond as a crime scene investigator, but she is also an amazing asset for Project Holiday. Let's congratulate Carrie Helen Brant, our Employee of the Month. And I would like to ask Chief Sims and Helen to come up, and I think there are others that would like to speak on her behalf.
Mayor, Commission, City Manager Lynn, hello. For the past 16 years, Carrie has taken on the responsibilities to ensure that our troops are being taken care of. She has worked with internal, external departments. She has solicited donations. She has reached out to department stores to assist her in her efforts. This wasn't a small undertaking. It took time and countless hours to make this happen each and every year. Over 5,000 care packages over the past 16 years has been sent out to our troops.
Good for you.
Carrie's compassion for our military and their families is unquestionable. Because of your unselfish act, Carrie, Project Holiday served a greater purpose. Carrie?
Okay. First, I would like to thank Dolores for nominating me for Employee of the Month. This is not just from the PD, but from the city itself, where there are so many deserving of the honor and recognition. This is truly amazing for me. Rarely is a PD employee chosen with this special honor, and certainly no one in crime scene has ever received it before me. I am the first CSI to receive this recognition as far as I can remember, and again, for this, I am honored. I'm known as a passionate supporter of our troops. Some say too much so. To me, there is no such thing. The fact that a total stranger would place his or her life in the line of fire for me, to leave their family behind for her pay and little resources when they return, there is no greater sacrifice. I can never thank them enough for their courage and dedication. My actions are nothing in comparison. Project Holiday gets most of the recognition over the holidays when we send the care packages to those deployed overseas. The behind-the-scenes, however, is a year-long effort by tireless volunteers seeking donations and supporting families here while their loved ones serves. This is a massive project, of which I only play a minor role. I have pleaded for donations, which allows me to spend your money and bring money to much-needed items to the troops. Without your donations, Project Holiday could never be a success. I always say no amount is too small, and every dollar is appreciated, and it really is. I am honored to be recognized for my part in Project Holiday, a project so close to my heart. As I retire today, after 24 years with the city, I promise to continue my support and work in supporting the troops through Project Holiday. Thank you for your recognition and look forward to your continued support. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Commission, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Johnny Castro. I was in the Army for 25 years. With Project Holiday, it's been incredible, the impact that they've created for our deployed soldiers. One thing Carrie doesn't realize is that some of the donations she received in December actually went to Ukraine, to the only military unit we had there, which was actually out of the state of Florida, the 53rd Brigade Combat Team. They since about a week and a half ago went back to Poland because of all the issues going on. But on behalf of them and behalf of us, as veterans and military personnel and all the work that you do, I'd like to present this to you on behalf of You Are Not Alone and Project Holiday. This award is being presented to Carrie Hellebrand for her years of dedication and support to our country's military deployed. Thank you for watching there six, Carrie.
That's so very special. Thank you. So, Carrie, because of your excellent work with the city and Project Holiday, and on behalf of our Mayor and Commission, we would like to give you this plaque. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And you're retiring. We're gonna figure this out, but you get a raise hours off. Woo-hoo! Nice. I'll donate it to someone. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Maybe we'll have to give her Delray bucks.
Lachey, how many years I've yet to?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four years. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Carrie, thank you so much, and you have touched so many families and so many of our servicemen from, you know, from the years that I've been here, bringing my kids down, packing those boxes, and the responses that we get, it's just really amazing. It really lets people know that our servicemen are thought about, you know, by at least the city of Delray Beach and others that do this wonderful project year after year. And thank you for your dedication in being able to allow the city of Delray Beach to participate in this with you.
Thank you.
So, we appreciate it. Well deserved. Okay, moving on to our comments and inquiries section on the agenda. We're gonna start with the City Manager's response for any prior public comments and inquiries. Have any?
At this time, however, I'd like to proceed with items 5A1, please.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, the Office of the City Manager, along with leadership from the Department of Parks and Recreation, have been in discussions with representatives from the Boca Raton Museum of Art for the last several weeks relative to the possibility and prospect of potential collaboration regarding opportunities at the Old School Square Complex. We are very delighted and pleased that they've decided to engage with us as outlined. It's very exciting what we potentially will be creating in the way of an interim agreement. Initially lasts for about an 18-month period. We think it's fantastic, and quite frankly, I've had a rather challenging time containing the excitement and enthusiasm regarding the possibility saving those opportunities for this time this evening. With that, Mr. Irvin Lipman is here, who is the Executive Director of the Boca Raton Museum of Art. Excellent dialogue and discussions. We've actually had an opportunity to visit at the facility and learn a great deal and did what we can to connect the dots in that regard. Of course, the focus relative to the opportunities in our community is our community, Delray Beach, Florida. However, given the background, record of achievement, and experiences of leadership like Mr. Lipman and his board members and other associates with the Boca Raton Museum of Art, we have an excellent opportunity to get to a tremendous place here in the city of Delray Beach, given the timing and where we are at this juncture. So, with that, I've made arrangements to ask Mr. Lipman and representatives of the Boca Raton Museum of Art to join us this afternoon to talk a little bit about the potential excitement and direction. In essence, ladies and gentlemen, this is all in response to direction having been initiated by the Office of the City Manager to engage and collaborate accordingly, as we look forward to the coming months to welcome and achieve in this regard. With that, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Irvin Lipman, Executive Director, Boca Raton Museum of Art.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm joined this afternoon with Jody Grass, who's our Board Chair, but thank you, Mr. Moore. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, for this invitation to come before you today. Like many in the arts community, we are concerned to see the Cornell Museum closed to the public. The Boca Raton Museum of Art Board of Trustees and staff believe we can play a role in operating the Cornell on an interim basis. We appreciate the invitation from the City Manager's office to begin these discussions. The dynamic and diverse audiences within Delray Beach will benefit from a relaunch of an arts center downtown. Though led by our museum, it will be a full partnership with the many existing arts organizations in the community. We do not intend for this to be an annex of the Boca Raton Museum of Art. Whatever we create will remain a distinct institution with its own identity and its own advisory committee, made up of representatives of Delray Beach's neighborhoods, organizations, and businesses. The population of South Florida continues to grow with new residents, new businesses, and hundreds of thousands of tourists who come for that special blend that this region offers. We firmly believe that part of what makes South Florida and Palm Beach County so attractive is the number and the diversity of arts and cultural organizations operating in this area. So, as we learned that once this community's vital arts center was at risk, we, as an institution, decided to offer our assistance. We enter these discussions fully committed to partnering with the broader community and with groups such as the Spady Cultural Heritage Museum and the Milagro Center with whom we already work. Forming a working advisory committee and bringing on a full-time director to serve as a liaison within the community are our first orders of business. We see an opportunity for an expanded creative campus. Delray Beach provides proximity to more communities, additional space in which to provide programming and different audiences, all essential to the museum's strategic plan and key to the museum's mission. Our services have long extended throughout Palm Beach County, in fact, throughout South Florida. Three of our 30 board members live and/or have businesses here in Delray Beach. Though 50% of our members live in Boca Raton, a large percent of our members also live in Delray Beach and Boynton Beach. Our institution also guarantees accreditation through the American Alliance of Museums and affiliation with the Association of Art Museum Directors. Those associations require a strict ethical code and professional adherence to financial reporting. We also maintain longstanding links to other professionals in our field, which will help us assure a robust exhibition schedule and innovative programming. I also want to underscore our strength in offering a diverse and inclusive educational environment for students, teachers, schools, and families. In short, we bring solidity and creativity to any new organization in Delray Beach and do so committed to including as many people as possible. It is too soon to speak of the kinds of programs we might offer, but we have long discussed establishing a guest artist initiative. We have met the reality that space is limited in our museum in Meisner Park and at our art school, which is housed in our original 60-year-old building on Palmetto Park Drive. The art school is already bursting at its seams with over 5,000 students a year taught by 35 adjunct arts teachers. An Artist in Residence program in Delray Beach could significantly impact all of South Florida and be a key component in the identity of the new arts center we might establish. Lastly, we have every intention to preserve the Cornell Museum's role in Delray Beach and maintain accessibility for the public to find quality arts programming and resources close to their home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It sounds very promising and very exciting, and we are very pleased to have you here today. Any questions, comments from the Commission?
Welcome to Delray.
And we're only 20 minutes away.
Yes. Very close.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Anything? No? Thank you so much, and pleasure to have you here. Okay, so moving on to 5A2.
Yes, Madam Mayor. The next presentation or update coming from the Office of the City Manager, of course, involves the Delray Beach Fire Rescue Department, specifically the Emergency Management Section. Follow-up considerations regarding current COVID-19-related epidemiology analysis. The last presentation to this effect took place during the November 16, 2021 meeting, in which we've offered some positive trends, but of course, because of the impacts of the Omicron virus, the city of Delray Beach actually judged correctly by maintaining practices in place that other cities throughout the South Florida region had tabled. So, for that reason, ladies and gentlemen, I think the city of Delray Beach judged correctly, and we will continue to do so moving forward. However, we have some pretty solid statistical information we would like to share this evening so as to help offer advice relative to current practices and standards that may become necessary or that can be alleviated for the reasons noted. Chief Tommy, please.
Yes, thank you, City Manager Moore. So, Madam Mayor, Commission, we've been watching this since March of 2020, as you guys know, and we continue to watch our numbers and stuff like that. We're happy to see them come down. I think I made a comment to you early on that I think Omicron's gonna come down just as fast as it went up, and that's pretty much what it's done. You'll see the graphs here in just a second, but everything's looking really good, and I feel very happy about where we're at right now today, and thanks to Mr. Moore's leadership and getting us to this far, I think we've done very well for ourselves. So, enough about me. Let's have the man with the stats.
Okay, Mr. Bell.
City Manager Bell.
Mr. Christopher Bell, ladies and gentlemen.
Madam Mayor, Members of the Commission, City Manager, Clerk, thank you for, next slide, actually, we can go straight to it. Thanks for having me. I think, as Chief said, we are in City Manager where we are at that point that we long hoped for. This is the case counts for new daily cases and average seven-day cases. You can see we've reached the lowest point that we've had since the beginning of the pandemic again. Note that we also got there back in October prior to the Omicron. That's when a lot of restrictions were eased. At that point, some of the projections noted a suspected or projected increase as we moved into the holiday season, which ended up coming to pass, and that was the Omicron spike that we saw. We don't see anything like that as we move forward. We'll look at the projections. If we go to the next slide. Hospitalizations and ICU admissions have also decreased proportionally to the new case count. As you know, the hospital admissions, ICU admissions, and deaths are all trailing indicators, so they continue to go down, but they are moving in the same direction that we anticipated. Next slide, please. The positivity, excuse me, new case positivity is one of the measurements that the CDC has changed. They no longer specifically refer to that in the community guidance, but one of the numbers that we had talked about a number of different times had been a lower-than-5% new case positivity, and this is actually yesterday's seven-day average. So, yesterday's count actually was at 5% for Palm Beach County, and as of today, the seven-day average dropped down to 4.8% or 4.6%. So, we are at that point even using the older, kind of more stringent, measurements that we had before. Next slide. And again, this is a major reason for that is the high vaccination rate, relatively speaking, that we've achieved. You look at the 65 and older, and it's 95.3% vaccinated in Florida, so that's a very high number. The 12 to 30 essentially range is stuck around 60%, and I think what I'd point out as well is the very flat curve that you see in the last month or two. We don't really vaccinating many new people. People who've gotten vaccinated have gotten vaccinated, and those who haven't haven't and aren't really coming in. Going along with that, we continue to offer up through today vaccination at Fire Headquarters at 51 West Atlantic. For the last four weeks, we've had four, one, six, and zero people arrive for vaccination in a four-hour time period on each of those days, so we didn't have anybody arrive today for vaccination. So, I think our plan would also be to cease offering that opportunity. The county health department is also ceasing some of their vaccination clinics at their sites, simply because it's so widely available. Every doctor's office who wants to offer it, every pharmacy that wants to offer it, can offer the vaccination now. Next slide. And this is from the University of Washington, the projections that we've been kind of relying on throughout the entire pandemic. You'll note that at least through the end of the chart is June of 2022. Right now, there are no variants of concern that they've identified where they think there will be a likely bump in the cases again. Obviously, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but as of today, while there are literally hundreds of variants and kind of mutations of the virus that are out there, none of them have produced widespread disease or illness. None of them beyond the ones that are already present have shown the propensity or the kind of laboratory characteristics that would make us think and make the University of Washington think that we should anticipate another spike. So, as of right now, we're looking as clear as we can look that far forward. I think that's the last slide. I'm happy to answer any questions if there's anything.
Sure, I have one. The boosters following the initial protocol or the initial vaccines, we've pretty much run that course as well. In other words, those that would be coming in for a booster six months later, pretty much we've run that as well.
I would say in the last, probably since December, since we had a very few new vaccination clients in December as Omicron was really spiking, the vast majority since November forward have all been boosters. We've had almost nobody new, and in the last couple of weeks, it's been almost all boosters as well.
Yeah, so basically, what I'm saying is that there wouldn't be a group of vaccinated that were allowed to get vaccinated that now would have the boosters available to them. So, in other words, it's already come and gone.
Of anybody who kind of got it at their first opportunity.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, you know, obviously, since somebody could have gotten vaccinated for the first time, decided last October to get it.
Well, no, I'm just talking about the groups.
Yeah.
So, in other words, we've had that six-month period.
Oh.
So, in other words, you're not gonna see a group of people that are gonna all of a sudden need a booster.
The only group that would apply to would be the
Youngest.
Five to elevens, and that's one for so low and so far off right.
Sure, and then they're also being offered elsewhere, anywhere pretty much you want to go with respect.
Pretty widely available right now.
I don't see any reason why we continue that with, you know.
Yeah, I think so as well.
Station. I don't know what the rest of my colleagues feel, but I'm feeling good about that.
I have a question, actually. Israel, they were offering a fourth booster. Do you see that as a potential thing here in our community?
Yeah, I think that's a great deal of speculation right now. I would suspect the answer is probably at this point, and I said probably not a yes because it all depends on how much virus continues to circulate in the community and how many people are really at risk. So, if the next variant or the next 10 variants that come out are essentially very similar to the ones that are already out and covered by the vaccine, there won't be that many people left who are susceptible to it, and I suspect that they will not be in a rush to urge a fourth booster. If, on the other hand, something that we don't currently anticipate arises in three months that either doesn't have good coverage or the coverage that exists from current vaccination has kind of lapsed or weaned, then that's when you'd see a fourth booster. So, I think probably at some point, but we haven't heard any guidance so far as when we expect that.
I just want to thank you. I got my booster at the fire department one of those Tuesdays, and I can't take, the men and women there, they were fabulous.
Great.
You know, orderly, had to fill out some paperwork, and it was just a great service to the community. It's, you know, a little disappointing that the numbers have gone down, but I took advantage and just wanted to thank, you know, you and the team over there.
Thank you. I think it's a great team, and no, lots of people have taken advantage. I think we're roughly 2,000 people that we provided vaccination to throughout the pandemic at or at one of the sites that we provided vaccination. So, no, I think we're pretty happy with those numbers.
Mr. Cassell? Okay. Vice Mayor?
I'd like to thank you because I received all three of my inoculations, old-fashioned word, at your location, and two out of the three were okay.
We've reassigned the gentleman who gave you your third.
Reassigned. By the time I got there, it was smooth sailing. I know the Vice Mayor preceded me, but I'm telling you, I didn't feel like it was eating.
I was a practice.
There you go.
Puppy, puppy.
Mr. Ball, is there anything?
Thank you.
Just thank you for giving us that resource and so quickly. I remember the time where I'd get a phone call and I'd get that question where I'd get my vaccine, and it was a very difficult answer, but for most of the time in the past year or two, I've been able to point them right, you guys right here in Delray. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, so as we conclude this particular topic, just to be clear in this regard, because of the current trajectory in terms of epidemiology analysis, what's happening in other municipalities throughout South Florida, Palm Beach County, I think we should iterate what the specific recommendation is regarding practices in municipal buildings, et cetera?
Surely. So, I would say that we're certainly at that point to consider removing the mask requirement as for public and for staff as entering city buildings. That is consistent with the other municipalities near us. That's consistent with just about everybody except with the exception of some school districts where they, again, have very low numbers of vaccinated children that they're really considering otherwise, but I think that's very consistent. I think the epidemiology supports that because we have a fairly high vaccination rate, especially here.
And let's go back to November 16, 2021. We talked a little bit about that because at the time, many other municipalities had already removed their requirements and protocols, respectively, but the city of Delray Beach decided, well, let's sit tight until after the holiday season.
Right.
See what happens, and I think, again, I'm proud of the fact that we've judged very correctly in that regard, and that we're past that point, and the current trajectory seems to remain pretty solid in that regard, ladies and gentlemen. I think that's an appropriate direction.
I'm with you, and if anything changes, we can always move backwards, so I'm 100% about it.
So, as of tomorrow, we'll make arrangements accordingly, ladies and gentlemen. Again, it was appropriate that we provide this information and background to both you as a City Commission and to the public at large, so that everybody is understanding and transparently comfortable with the direction being offered.
Sure.
Very good, very well. Thank you so much. Thank you for the presentation. Good news. And moving on to 5A3, which is the current project with Missy Barletto.
Throw my mask.
You know, they're very good because I'll tell you, we haven't had a really big flu season because we've been forced to wear them, so there is something to be said about that. So, those people who are continuing to wear them, I respect that 100% too.
We're all gonna have to work on our poker faces again also.
There you go. Right.
Good evening, Missy Barletto, Public Works Director. Because there's just the one meeting this month, I'm gonna run through both the city construction projects and the private construction projects, so I'm gonna be a little bit quicker than I normally am. Atlantic Dunes Park seawall, we are now in the south parking lot. The north parking lot has been reopened to folks who are parking there. Is that me? Southeast Court Drainage, that's better. The Southeast Court Drainage project is complete. We're working on the punch list. All we have left to do is replace one palm tree and install a backflow prevention on the outfall at that location. The Brant Drive Bridge continues to be under construction for at least another eight or nine months. That detour will remain in effect. George Bush Boulevard, which I would like to remind everyone, is a FDOT project at the city's request. The road closure that we just had for the last two weeks has ended now. The road is reopened as of yesterday and will be reopened the rest of this week on Monday, March 7th through March 21st. The next road closure for that project will occur. That is between Northeast 8th Avenue and Palm Trail. It will be completely closed as we're doing utility replacements, water, sewer, stormwater in that area and getting ready to do the sidewalk and roadway construction. There are brochures from DOT on the side table over here next to where the agendas are if anybody is interested or concerned and would like to reach out to the DOT folks about that project. Our sidewalk project, our public right-of-way accessibility improvements for this particular last construction effort also is at substantial completion, and we're working on the punch list for that, so there won't be any further inconvenience associated with that. On Island Drive, we are in the process of doing some much-needed bridge repairs and replacing sidewalk. There are intermittent, single-lane bridge closures in that neighborhood. Flaggers are present when that's required. The reclaimed Area 10 construction project has an upcoming road closure at South 4th Street and South Swinton Avenue at that intersection just on the east side of Swinton that will close the road for a day or two, but we don't have a date for that yet.
You want to move your
That will be coming up in the next month.
Move your slide forward.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's me. I turned my page over here. Okay, the Southwest Neighborhood roadway reconstruction project is also at substantial completion. We're working on some of the punch list for that. Homewood Boulevard, also a FDOT-managed project. There are flagger operations and intermittent lane closures from Old Germantown Road to Linton Boulevard that'll last through the end of this month. And at that point, they'll be moving across Linton Boulevard onto Homewood on the north side of Linton. The Northeast Avenue Streetscape project The Northeast Avenue Streetscape Project, there continue to be daily road closures with no through traffic as we complete the water and sewer and the hookups for new development in that area. Osceola Park Phase Two, there is one road closure that is Southeast 1st Avenue between Southeast 8th Street and Southeast 9th Street. And then two of the the roads between 3rd Avenue, between Southeast 4th and Southeast 10th and on Southeast 8th Street between Southeast 4th and Southeast 1st Avenue are intermittently closed throughout the day with flaggers present. So tonight I'm bringing you one new thing.
Before you go on, did you, would you like to give us a little bit more on the reclaimed Area 10? Is that southwest 4th Street?
Yeah, it's right at the intersection of south, south, it's south, on the southeast 4th.
Southeast side.
It's on the Osceola Park side.
Okay, thank you.
So tonight, at the last time we had this conversation, we talked about road closures that were greater than two weeks and whether those happen on a per instance, instance, per each case that that one is requested or whether we do that in aggregate across the lifetime of a project. And we had talked about we were doing these as aggregate throughout the lifetime of a project. So we have a couple of road closures that have been requested by the Atlantic Crossings Project. Both of these are coming up and would start in the next week or so, March 7th through March 11th. And then again, on March 14th through March 18th, which we have in that way to show that the road will not be closed or or limited across the weekend, but just during weekdays from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM. The project is requesting a single lane closure on northbound Federal Highway between Atlantic Avenue and Northeast 1st Street. So the narrowing down of that roadway will actually happen south of Atlantic Avenue, about mid-block before you get to Atlantic. You'll be narrowed down to to the one lane road. And then when you get north of Northeast 1st Street, then you'll go back to the two lanes, which we've done several times in the past. This project, this permit request has already been approved by FDOT. This is an FDOT roadway. But our ordinance requires us to bring it to the commission and to get your your approval and blessing for the road closure also. During this same period of time, on March 8th and 9th, the project is also asking for a single lane road closure in the same area of Federal Highway, but also in the northbound lane of Atlantic Avenue while they actually start hanging signs for the businesses that will be going in in at 609 East Atlantic Avenue in Building 1. So they'll be hanging their first signs on the outside of the building and getting ready for that.
Okay, so it's not a northbound lane. It would be the northern portion of the west.
The back, thank you.
The west lane, yes. Okay, so basically that whole corner is going to be quarantined off all the way around that project.
Yes, ma'am. So the the bottom picture on here shows the full, the land closure where you start to narrow down for Atlantic, for Federal Highway. And then on the left side of the screen, the bottom picture shows that corner where on Atlantic and Federal where that'll be closed just for those two days on March 8th and 9th. And then the top picture shows the pedestrian, the pedestrian activity where the pedestrians should should walk around the project, cross the street, walk on the other side of the street. Please don't walk in in oncoming lanes of traffic.
Very good. And just so everybody knows, that is an old picture of a, there's buildings there now. So in case anybody's looking at that and trying to figure out where it is, that's the intersection of the northbound Federal to Atlantic on the northeast corner. Very good.
I pulled these pictures straight out of their their permit application to the Department of Transportation.
Very good. Any other questions?
Is this the place to ask question?
Yes.
I would just like to have everyone's attention called to the fact that we're closing George Bush and we're closing, not closing, we're practically closing, we're increasing traffic both northbound and westbound, which means that we are going to have one congested area and we still have our tourists, our snowbirds, et cetera. And that means that Linton Boulevard is going to be heavily impacted. I don't think our timing was very good, but I'm sure it was out of our hands.
This is FDOT, one of them.
So at this time, I'd like to ask the commission for for a for comments on the road closure and for consensus to approve the the road closures.
I'm sorry I jumped the gun.
It's all right.
What choice do we have?
That's my question.
It's an excellent question, too.
Okay, well, that's that answers the question.
It's more perfunctory because of the code.
Right.
But it is an FDOT road. So really, they have the final say. They've already approved it. This is more just bringing it to your attention. The other thing that we were going to ask for consensus for is we talked the last, at our last meeting, about the 30 days and whether it's an aggregate 30 days total or if it's 30 days for each occurrence. And the commission was concerned about, you know, all of these closures. Do you want us to continue bringing these until there's a change in the ordinance? The ordinance isn't clear. And so, you know, the consensus last time was to say, you know, it's it's each occurrence or is it the aggregate? So I think we kind of need that direction. This is a lot to put on your agendas each and every time there's a closure. And so I think that until we have more specificity in the code, if you want to give direction just for this specific project, you can do that today or we can continue bringing these before you until we get a little more clarity in the code.
I'd like to see it continue that we know what's going on.
You'll always know, but the the question becomes the commission approval. The code requires that, and it's it's vague, it says 30 days. So you can interpret that as each request. If each request is less than 30 days, then then the staff can approve it. Or is it in the aggregate? Once they hit 30 days of closures, then any closure after that, whether it's one day or 30 days, would still come before you. And so, you know.
I like the second just because it lets us know what's really going on with the project because, you know, we could have one down day to make a second aggregate group and I'd rather just know that we are now in excess of 30 days of closure. So they have to come back each and every time. I would prefer it that way.
Is that the consensus?
Yes.
The second option.
Yeah. Also, I think you were going to let us know that we did receive the $125,000.
I was going to leave that for Missy.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
Her shiny moment.
Open the shark.
Sorry, sorry.
Actually, we did receive all of the the payments that were due to us from this project. They total slightly more than $1.5 million.
Excellent. Thank you, Missy.
Yeah, we're happy to have that. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of is that there is an upcoming request for single lane closures for this project on Northeast 1st Street in order to start removing the sheet piles. So originally, that request had come in to do a complete road closure, which we we internally have have discussed with them and now they're down to single lane road closures for only one week at a time. Then there will be a week between and then another week so that that they are cognizant of the the inconvenience that they're creating and they're working with us to try to minimize that as much as possible.
Thank you. Being that's such an auxiliary road, I think it will be so much less impactful than the the major corner that they're going to be closing off. So I'm good with that.
Yes, but there are a lot of people who live down this road.
Absolutely, people and also feeding into the park. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Very good. Anything else?
Yes.
Oh.
Not getting off that easy tonight.
I guess not.
So these are the other other private developer construction projects. On the Banyan Court Project, we'll be working on installing sewer and sewer line across Barwick Road from March 14th to March 18th. They took care to plan that during spring break, so they won't be interrupting as much of the school activities. The Peachtree Hotel Group Project is going to start removing the sheet piles for their underground parking garage just about the same time that Atlantic Crossings is. The sidewalks in this one are closed, but there won't be any street closures at this time. Aura Delray Beach, they are also working on water main and drainage installations in Atlantic Avenue, west of Congress Avenue. This is another one of those projects that came in and got got DOT approval prior to us going to them and asking them to seek approval from us as well. We remedied that. This lane closure is March 1st through March 11th. So this would be after this this particular lane closure, we'll be coming back to you with all future lane closures for this project. So our number of commercial open permits right now is 97. Our single family home open permits is 146. And our active single family permits, which includes renovations, driveways, fences, pools and other other home renovations, is 812. So the permits continue to roll in. And as always, these are the ways that we notify the public about these inconveniences that are due to the construction projects. And with that, I am complete.
Thank you very much, Missy. And for all those that are listening, it's great to see so many of our roads being updated, especially in our sewers and and some of those things that had been let to go for a very long period of time. Unfortunately, we're asking for everybody's patience. And then there are also, of course, some some closures due to some of these larger projects that are underway as well. But it's great to see that we are actually moving forward with some of the things that have been left behind for so long that we're able to get them done. So we'll be patient and then we'll have a better system at our beck and call in the future. Thank you very much. At this point in time, the meeting is now open to public comment. I'm sorry, Mr. Moore, did you have anything else?
Oh, ma'am, that concludes it for me at this time. Thank you.
At this point in time, the meeting is now open to public comment from anyone wishing to speak on any topic or agenda item other than a quasi judicial item or a public hearing item. The public will have the opportunity to speak on the quasi judicial and public hearing items later in the meeting as those items are called. For public comment, please sign in, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Again, once again, thank you all for everything that you do. And first, I want to thank City Manager Moore for presenting the Boca Raton Museum this evening to assist with Cornell Museum. I think that's a fabulous opportunity for collaboration. I have to say, Executive Director Lippman's comments, each and everything was very thoughtful and we we all appreciate it very much. So just want to give support to that. And then secondly, love Missy Barletto and her team. They do a phenomenal job, something that is not in Missy's purviews, but it's a responsibility of FDOT. But it was mentioned this evening is that street closure in front of Atlantic Crossing. And I drive by there every single day and I know that there are signs that ask people to go across the street. They're still neglecting it and people are walking and had oncoming traffic. The other day, I contacted Missy because I actually saw my mother, I know everybody's going to be horrified by this, but I actually saw my mother wheeling a stroller in the in the street. So something has to be done with respect to that. So I'm asking all you fabulous, wonderful people to kind of push that thing along. And again, thank you very, very much. And and City Manager Moore, you've accomplished so much in just a short period of time and we thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am. Did you put your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Rita Rana, 50 East Road, Delray Beach, Florida.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Charlene Farrington, Director of the Spady Museum, 170 Northwest 5th Avenue. And with me is Mr. Mark Schneider. We are representing the Palm Beach County Remembrance Project Coalition. If you'll recall, last October, because I know you don't have anything else to think about, we made a presentation to you about the Remembrance Project sponsored by the Equal Justice Initiative and how the project came to be and the objectives of the project. Well, now we are back to open the issue of the site for the historical marker for Mr. Samuel Nelson. So we met with Commissioner Johnson about the marker and I'll be reaching out to the rest of you to talk about the discussion, to discuss this project, the marker specifically, and get some direction from you.
Thank you. We have a preferred spot. Here's here's what a marker looks like. They're rather large. They're at least three feet across and they look like regular historical markers, but they're not produced by the state of Florida. They're produced by the Equal Justice Initiative. Our preferred initial site that we want to suggest to you is at the corner of Southeast 5th and Atlantic Avenue. There's this bump out into the street and the the rightmost post there is a light post and then we had three palm trees. And the marker could go between the light post and the first palm tree or it could go between the third, the second and third palm trees. The site at which Mr. Nelson was abducted was 14 Southeast 5th. So this is pretty near there. And this is, again, this is what it looks like. And this is looking between the second and the third palm across Southeast 5th. That would be another potential site, though down in the very left hand corner, I found that there's an electrical outlet there that would have to be replaced if we chose that site. So we're looking to you for input on this. If this is a site that is acceptable to you, that's fine. We'd like to meet with each of you individually and see whether this is an acceptable site. If it's not an acceptable site, we would like your input as to where you would prefer a historical marker like this to be situated. We'd hope to be able to install it sometime in 2013. We know, excuse, 2023. And we know that there'll be a complicated process for getting it approved because it has to be approved by FDOT if that, if we choose the site near Atlantic Avenue. But we'll be working on that approval process and keep you informed about it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Schneider, before you go, let me ask you a question. What direction would the language on that marker be? Because that's a southbound, if you will, lane and you're also on the kind of the east side of that. So how would that, how would you see that?
It would be facing, the the sign would be facing the oncoming traffic.
Okay.
So there would be two sides to the sign and we'd have to have a little plaza where people could stand and walk around the sign. We don't anticipate that people driving by will stop to.
No, I know, but I just was trying to figure out how, if it would be facing the sidewalk, but you're saying it would be more like facing the traffic, but both sides would have the language.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you so much. I'll look forward to meeting with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Carol Anderson, 4812 West Bexley Park Drive. I think it was maybe in 2014 that I first came up here and urged prompt action to correct the horrible intersection at Swinton and Atlantic. So when I saw Item 7D on the agenda, I just had to come in and like jump up and down because finally, we may be getting some action on this. I don't need to tell you all what a horrible situation we have there with everybody going every which way and nobody really able to pay full attention to all of the dynamic hazards at that very, very populated intersection. So I congratulate you. I urge you to get this approved and in the works right away. And personally, I think the plan for the three blocked designated intersections is what we need. As for the intermediate crossway on Swinton, useful if there's something going on at Old School Square, but otherwise, it may just disrupt traffic. And I would tie your interest in that to the next Item 7E, the Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan. That intersection is a very important part of said plan. And also to the presentation on construction product projects because we know the Atlantic Crossing hullabaloo and I really don't expect that nobody's going to want to cross Atlantic all the way from the bridge back to Sixth Avenue. So we're going to have to make some changes in our streetways in order to make that area safe for the people, pedestrians, the pedestrians, drivers, bicycles, et cetera, that will definitely be using it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Patty Jones, 1026 Point Center Road, Delray Beach, Florida.
Hello, Patty Jones, 1026 Point Cetera Road, Delray Beach, Florida. As a citizen of Delray Beach, one that voted for several of you, I'm embarrassed with the city commission. A commission that is not listening to the entire city. You are only listening to a select few. You have closed your mind to reason. The decisions you have made in the last nine months are atrocious, ignorant, and uneducated. The half-truths and the spin that you have used, it's for the books. It's reality TV and I'm embarrassed. Now you are proposing to have a Boca entity run a treasured Delray Beach Art Museum? The Cornell Art Museum that Old School Square started as a nonprofit 32 years ago? Are you foolish? I like Boca, I really do. I go down there and visit, but I love Delray. I am a citizen, I'm a resident here and I live here. We, a lot of citizens that live here chose Delray Beach because it is Delray Beach. It's not Boca. Um, we, we live here and I, as other, many others, do not want a Boca museum here in the center of Delray. You kicked out the local and successful nonprofit, Old School Square, with your incompetent and closed-minded decision. And now you want Boca to take it over? Learn from your mistakes. Look at what you've done. Is this going to be your legacy? Listen to the citizens of Delray Beach for once. You didn't listen to us in August. You made a decision, a non-agenda decision, without public comment. And when we came to speak, you had a closed mind. You were not listening. We do not want a Boca museum in Delray. Would Boca want a Delray Beach Art Museum? I think not.
For the record, curator that used to work at the Cornell Museum is from New Orleans, just so everybody knows. And you know, there's no comment back, there's no comment back. There is no, no, there is no comment back, ma'am.
She was an employee.
For the record, she came here, I asked her her address, she tried to put 51 South, I mean, North Swinton down. I said, no, I need your home address and she did say it and under oath-
She was here and she worked. She was here and she worked and it was a national awarded museum.
Thank you very much, your time is done. The record, New Orleans, bring her in, curating, and then leaving. So it's Boca. Yes, sir.
Will?
Listen, I'm just, I apologize because, you know, I'm just tired of being, you know, being said things that are like half-truths. So I apologize, I should, probably shouldn't have said anything, but I just wanted to make sure that the record was clear. Thank you very much and yes, sir.
Oh, my name's Jeff Wyman. Uh, I have the Wyman Art Studio, 314 Northeast Third Avenue. Been there about 13, 14 years now. I just want to say, um, I'm not a politician, I'm just a professional artist that moved here, take care of my mom 14 years ago. And I don't, I live in Lake Worth, I can't afford to live in Delray, but I've had a studio here for many years. And, um, I, I believe that there's a lot of potential in the activities, aesthetic activities that I've seen over the years, many different organizations in Delray. And it's sad that Cornell's closed, but I think by inviting, um, Irving Lippman and the Boca Raton Museum, it's, it's a tremendous opportunity to bring a level of education and learning of contemporary art and support the artists that live and work in Delray, Boynton, Boca, Lake Worth. It's not really, if I, if I'm not wrong, I, uh, I gave a talk about six years ago in front of the Cornell Museum about public art. And they wanted to, the goal of the Cornell was to be kind of an international art mecca and bring attention, you know, to the city of Delray Beach as supporting artists at an international level. In order to do that, you know, it's really important to have liaisons and relationships with professional institutions like Boca Museum, the Norton Museum, any museum. And, uh, artists as well that are actively working. And, you know, from a, from my perspective in culture, you have the makers and the creators who present and, uh, the stages like the Cornell or the Boca or Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York, it really doesn't matter. The city and the community and the residents benefit from an active, uh, venue to where they can see, uh, artists' work, the process of work, the education about that work and the history and the antiquity, uh, of American art and also international art. So I think it's, it's a wonderful opportunity to collaborate and get Cornell opened again having, uh, the Boca Museum working with the city. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Mr. Wyman beautifully stated. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. It's a little shaky up here.
I thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Ralph Papa. Um, I had a studio in Delray Beach, uh, on Atlantic Avenue for maybe 10 years. And, uh, I love, in fact, this is the most interesting town, I think, in South Florida is Delray Beach. I've seen it grow, I've been down, uh, I live in Boynton Beach though, of course, uh, but my heart has always been in Delray. It's a strong part of me. You'll notice that, and this is really in regard to the Cornell Museum. And the Cornell Museum's title, as I remember it, is Cornell Museum of Art, History, and Culture, which is a perfect fit for what's going on in our growth in, in this area. I also taught at Old School Square for 20 years, you know, from first coming down here. And I'm an artist for almost well over 70 years. I may not look that old, but I am. I really feel strongly that it's a wonderful idea. I think what was going on with Delray Beach and the cultural organizations between the schools, all of the things that were going on are invaluable and it was the best I've ever seen and what it's done to the community. Going forward, I'd see it's a great opportunity to have the Boca Museum sort of overlook the function, particularly for the Cornell Museum of Art. I'm involved with plein air painting and I, since I came down here, I've won it. And plein air painting is just going out and painting today's culture for tomorrow's history. And we've been sort of having artists involved. We have over a thousand artists in plein air Palm Beach going out daily, painting what's here today, which is gone tomorrow. So we have all of those paintings as part of history. I'm also involved nationally with the plein air painters in America and internationally, I've been involved with a group that made a sister city with Boynton Beach with Ferindola, Italy. Ferindola, Italy is a place I go to paint too. But this whole thing of plein air painting, I think, is going to be a strong opportunity to have not only South Florida represented in Delray Beach, we must have a lot of paintings of Delray Beach. And if we ever had a show, we would fill the walls of this whole building. But it's beyond that. It's Palm Beach County, it's South Florida. I teach at the Lighthouse Art Center, I teach at the Armory Art Center, I teach at the Boca Museum and 20 years at Old School Square. And it's growing and it's part of the culture today. And I think we got a great opportunity to expand it going forward. Thank you, Irvin, for the wonderful presentation you put and I think it's going to be a positive.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Uh, hello, I'm Jim Chard, live in Delray at 401 Southeast Fourth Avenue. And I wasn't going to say anything tonight, I was just going to sit out in the audience quietly, but when the mayor attacked the chair of the Old School Square, I just had to say something. The employee that you referred to was a part-time employee. And I think it's notable that we do get part-time employees and hopefully long-term employees like the city manager from outside the city. Cause we are not the only source of talent in this country. But the important thing is that I think that Patty was trying to say is this institution and the donors and the volunteers come from Delray. And to point to one person who was a part-time person in a time of pandemic and tar the entire 32-year history in the effort of thousands of people, thousands of hours, I just think is, is unseemly.
For the record, there wasn't an attack and I just wanted to set the record straight. So I'm setting the record straight that there wasn't an attack and that the curator at that, that organization was living in New Orleans. Thank you. Ma'am?
Hi.
Yes.
Good evening, Laura Simon with the Downtown Development Authority. Um, just wanted to first just go through a couple of things that are on your agenda, uh, from the DDA's perspective. Um, Item 7C and 7D are both, um, integral projects that affect and impact the downtown. So you have for Item 7C, which is the parking and curb side study. We've provided a very detailed memo. Uh, that was a result of many meetings on this, um, actual study that provided recommendations from our, our DDA perspective, the Downtown Board, um, investment and, uh, staff investment in that. So just, um, hopefully you had time to take a look at that. And then also the Swinton project, um, glad to see that's come back. That is something that I think about four or five years ago, we sat in many meetings to talk about that as well. So, um, just wanted to raise those to your attention and I'm here tonight if you have any questions. And then also Item 9A, it's our first reading, can I speak on that or? Yeah, okay. So we did also review that at our, um, DDA board meeting a couple of months ago and we're very supportive of this ordinance allowing, as you know, we are still, uh, we're very much an outdoor, we, 96% of our businesses have outdoor dining, outdoor seating, outdoor shopping. So just encouraging us to look at this as a new way for all standalone bars preferably. Um, but if this is a step in that direction, we really would hope that you would be supportive of that. Um, second of, and then the third thing, just, um, I know we have a lot of construction and development going on in our city, throughout the entire city, mostly in the downtown, um, as well as from big projects to little projects. So there's a lot of digital signage out there, there's a lot of, um, detours going on. So I would just, and we're also in the middle of our busiest month. Last weekend was probably the busiest we've seen. Um, and with just really with special events, spring break, development, road construction. So signage is critical. So if we've got a parade, which actually happens on March 12th, is our St. Patrick's Day Parade and festival is back in full swing. Just anything we can do to help those that are coming downtown that don't know about our construction projects or don't know where to park, that we make it really easy for them. The tennis tournament was phenomenal. We had a great, uh, system for parking there. Be great to create a, a great system for that on a regular basis. So I know we've worked with the team over the, um, past couple of years and just over the past couple of months to try to figure that out, but just encourage that. And then lastly, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you all for participating, um, and the community for coming out to support Delray Beach Fashion Week, which is 2022, which was a big success, record-breaking numbers, both from attendance perspective, retailers, this is a, an opportunity for us to showcase all of our retail here in Delray Beach and downtown. And that we also had record-breaking, um, uh, sales or, um, ticket sales and finances that went right to the Achievement Center for Children and Families. So thank you for your support and thank you to the city for all of your support and city staff for everything that they do.
And while you're here, because I don't know how long you're going to be here, you did an amazing job on that from start to finish. I was able to participate in a lot of it and I was just blown away. So wonderful job, you, you make us proud, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you.
I second that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Gail Clark, 124 Northeast Seventh Avenue. I too wasn't planning to make, uh, any comments at all. In fact, I didn't put any lipstick on, comb my hair, anything. But I hear, I felt, I just wanted to say thank you so much, Mr. Moore, for your bringing the collaboration with Boca Museum to Delray Beach. Um, I know I'm speaking for a lot of folks I know who are looking forward to a new chapter in Delray. Thank you all for, um, for working hard on this. And, um, I'm looking forward to a new 2022 with, uh, a lot of exciting events with the museum. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Moving on to the consent agenda. We have an approval with, uh, the, um, changes, please.
Motion to approve. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Kussell?
Yes.
Okay, so we're now at our regular agenda and we're going to start with, um, a couple of items that were pulled off, moved over. Have a great one, thank you very much for coming in, Mr. Lippman. Looking forward, um, to, uh, the first one, which is, was 6I, I believe it is, yeah, I, um, under- Yep. So 6I is 7AA. We'll begin with that when that's the approval amendment, one to the, um, memorandum of understanding with the Chamber of Education Fund. I believe you pulled that.
I did pull that, I had some questions. Um, do we know how much money has gone to schools as a result of the program?
Do you have your microphone on?
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Thank you.
Do we know how much money has gone to the schools? This program's been running for a year.
We have no immediate information available in terms of financial allotment as a result of the program being in place at this time. Ms. Borleto, I believe that's the case with you as well, yes?
Yes. Um, the Chamber Education Foundation has, has provided their, um, quarterly reports. The, I do not believe that they've, they've done any of the wrapping beyond the original pilot program though, so they haven't taken in a lot of money yet to be able to start distributing to the schools.
Many were in the pilot program?
Three.
And was that, uh, I can't remember, was it 5,000 each? What was the advertising?
I think it's 2,500, no?
I think it was discounted for the pilot program.
It was discounted for the pilot program.
Before we move forward, could we get a little information? I, one of the things that concerned me about this was the, um, item in the agreement, Number Four, which talks about the responsibilities of the city. And when we originally had discussed this, we weren't going to be having responsibilities. And one of them is, uh, dress complaints, maintain them upon notice. And I know when this first started, we weren't going to be doing anything. And then, um, I, I spoke to Attorney Jalen and then there were some questions about us paying for things. I'd just like to know what the actual situation is. I'm in favor of this program, but I just want to know exactly what we're doing and how much money is going to be going to the schools. When is that going to happen? And that we're still working with our same agreement, which is that the schools aren't going to have to be working to get this money. That was one of my biggest concerns.
I know, I would just tell you, I know that the schools will not be working to get this money. A, a lot of the, um, bus shelters that had to be identified had to be cleaned up first and then they had to pre-sale a certain amount rather than just wrap one at a time. Um, so I know that they have pre-sold, we have one of the members or even the chair, I think, if you want to ask him anything.
I was going to say, Mr. Chard is here.
Right.
If you want to ask him to the podium.
Yeah, please come. Thank you.
Uh, there's no substantive changes in the agreements that were struck when this MOU was first put together. The only requirements from the city are the requirements they have today of, uh, maintaining those bus shelters or keeping them clean or repairing them when a car runs into them. The, um, money, uh, goes equally across all schools as requested, uh, by the commission and the net amount of X putting up the wrap, uh, all goes to the schools. There are no, um, management fees or anything like that on the part of the DCEF.
Okay, more still, because, uh, one of the schools, I spoke to somebody at a school and they got paperwork to fill out to get a thousand dollars from, you know, your organization, which presumably was for some other program. But the paperwork was extremely involved as it related to the amount of money. Um, and, you know, without-
Commissioner, I think you're mistaken, it's one page.
Well, the person who filled it out felt it was excessive in light of the contribution.
It may have been filled out for some other program.
Who was the Chamber Education?
I appreciate you showing it to me.
Well, I think that would disclose who said that and I don't know that I'd be comfortable, but I just want to make sure that we're just giving them the money and not making them work for it because it's not a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money to you or me, but it's a lot to the principals. And, uh, I think what you're referring to was the money that was handed out after the education breakfast. And what we did on that was that we asked, they fill out a one-page form saying what they intended to do with the money so that we would have accountability.
Or paragraphs, it was, it required paragraphs to explain.
Uh, and I think it, they specified the number of words per paragraph and maybe the largest was 250 words.
Okay, but I'm- Okay, but I'm, I'm not trying to, listen, I'm not trying to bicker with you. I'm just saying, we are doing something different with our bus shelters than we would typically do because we want to see the benefit go to the school. And I want to make sure that's happening because the program has been active for one year and thus far that hasn't happened. So that's why I'm asking.
No, I understand, but you're referring to a different program. You're not referring to.
I'm referring to a different program. What I'm saying is, the person who was allotted with filling out the form thought that you were asking for a great deal of information in relation to what they were getting. And that's, I'm just saying that to you very honestly, not trying to be critical. I'm saying to you, the program has been active for a year. You haven't allotted any money. And in past programs where you're allotting less, you're asking for a lot on the part of the recipients. I'm wondering why in the year this program hasn't kicked off the ground.
That's another question. I'd be glad to address that.
Thank you.
But you are, excuse me, conflating two different programs. You're talking about the $1,000 that is handed out.
No, no, I understand they're two different programs.
And there could, depending on the success of this program, this could be thousands of dollars going to the schools.
We expected it to be.
Yes.
Last year when we discussed it.
So we were given a list by the city, and you've asked the question, so I'm going to answer and be very candid. We were given a list by the city of the bus shelters that we could wrap, all right? Some of them were missing. Some of them were broken and glass distributed. A lot of them were in areas that had low traffic, so they wouldn't be seen. So that was problem number one. And that took time to work with Missy's people, very supporting, very positive, to go around and look at all of the bus shelters and come up with a schedule for starting to clean them. Then there was the process of working with the possible sponsors so that they would be able to pick the design that they wanted and be able to pick the bus shelter that they wanted. And as you might imagine, there is some competition for the more heavily trafficked areas.
Of course.
And then also in the MOU, there was a requirement that the DCEF report quarterly to the city manager's office as to what had been performed and what had not been performed. That has been done and there's been no response. And also, and this one is unfair to Mr. Moore, I apologize ahead of time. The designs have been submitted to the city for three of the four bus shelters that we have money from, that we want the city manager's office to approve. So we're still waiting for that. So this has been a cooperative effort that has been slow-walked for lots of reasons that I'm uncomfortable with, but it has happened. And what we're now at is trying to get to the point to change that list of bus shelters, which we asked for last fall, and it's before you today. So it is the right bus shelters, not the wrong bus shelters.
Is it unreasonable to ask for us to regroup at some time with some better information, though? We don't, you know, he's saying he's providing stuff to you and you're not responding and.
He didn't say that.
That is not what I said.
He did not say that.
Slow-walking? Haven't heard from him, you said.
What I said was, we are required by the terms of the MOU to report to the city manager's office.
And you hadn't heard?
I've heard nothing back.
Okay.
And then what I said was, we are also required to submit the designs to the city manager's office for their approval. We also have to get the schools' approval. We have to get the sponsors' approval. But the first thing we have to do, and that's what this item was originally about, was to approve the bus shelters themselves. Which ones are, is the city allowing?
Right, but this program seems simple in some respects. And I'm not understanding why we're here a year later and it's not implemented moving.
You just explained it.
No, but that doesn't make.
They had to identify the actual bus shelters that were physically there. They've cleaned them up. Then there's the case of reaching out to schools and sponsors, getting vector logos, making art, getting that art approved by the city. And now we're finally here. We actually, you actually have deposits. Designs are in our city's hands to be approved. And I'm assuming in, within weeks, if not days, we're actually going to have some bus shelters wrapped. We're finally, we're finally there. And so this is on the consent agenda to approve the appropriate buses to wrap. We're there. I would have liked that that happened sooner, of course, but as you just saw, long list of reasons why it didn't.
Yeah.
So let's go.
And I do have to agree with you, Commissioner. It has taken way too long. But I would also add this, that you mentioned the $2,500 number. That is the correct number for the new bus shelters. And we have budgeted for this year for 15 of those bus shelters. So that could be considerable money once you net the cost of the wrapping out for schools. Much more than the little $1,000 that we handed.
I'd like to see that.
Me too.
Yes, ma'am.
If.
I mean, are you finished?
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chart, for your efforts in doing this. This says, this effort has shown me one thing. We have not been very diligent about the maintenance, repair, location of our bus shelters. And I'm not putting this on you, Mr. Moore, but I am putting the city administration on notice. This is just one of the many things that has been allowed to happen in our city. So I thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
I wasn't, go ahead. Do a second for.
Second for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Missy, I wanted to ask you a couple of questions if you don't mind. Any, any changes, any major changes in the amendment to the first, what we were going around other than the changes of the locations of the bus shelters?
No, ma'am. Exhibit A changed, which is the locations of the chosen bus shelters. Attached to your agenda item is a comparison of where the old bus shelters are, where the new ones are. And, and just extending the term for an additional year to give the DCEF folks an opportunity to get their program up and running.
Okay. And were we always going to be cleaning the shelters and taking care of it? Is that something that?
We were always going to be cleaning the shelters. We have, you know, we have, there are some shelters that are in poor shape and we have agreed to do some maintenance of those shelters as well.
Is that a responsibility of the city of Delray Beach to maintain those shelters? Or is that something that Palm Tran does?
It is a city responsibility to do that.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Please call the roll. Unless there's any other discussion. Call the roll.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Okay, moving.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on to the next agenda item, I'd like to respond to Mr. Chart as far as any lack of information that may have not been brought forward by the office of the city manager. One of the principal roles and functions of our assistant city manager, recently hired individual, Mr. Jeff Oris, is to serve as an emissary or liaison, so to speak, with the various partners in this regard. That does include the Chamber of Commerce. I would like to ask him to likewise visit with you and anybody else concerned to make sure that these issues and concerns that may have been previously experienced during the past year, whatever the case may have been, is not again repeated. So we have that structure and protocol in place as of his election. So therefore, he'll be more than happy to work with you and anybody else concerned so as to not have that experience yet again. So with that, Mr. Jeff Oris, I believe you've all had the opportunity to admit, he just provided you his business card. The two of you are shaking hands. Good place to be. Ladies and gentlemen, good job, Jeffrey Oris, Jim Chart. We look forward to it. Henceforth, we will go forward and continue to respond and be as attentive as we can possibly be. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor and ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to 7BB, which was originally 6C. This is for the subdivision plat approval. And I believe that Vice Mayor took this off.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. There was a need, after going through the agenda, there was a need that came to my attention for more clarity on this item. And because of my inability to get this to happen to my satisfaction, I was therefore asking that the item be tabled for a period of at least 30 days in order to accomplish the objective before the city's approval is granted.
May I ask what the clarification that you're looking for is?
Well, there are just a lot of little loose ends that I don't think were neatly tied up. And until those happen, I think that there's going to be meetings with Anthea to help with the understanding of any questions about it.
Santhea, do you, can you enlighten the commission?
So the applicant is here, Tim Hernandez from New Urban. This is a replat to implement the Class 4 site plan approval that the Historic Preservation Board approved for the modifications to the Atlantic Grove development that included filling in the townhouse, it's on the townhouse parcel. But this property has, I guess, a long history in terms of an exchange of land that took place. And then ultimately, there was, you know, different lots were changing from Mount Olive Church to New Urban. And there was, I'm sure, a cash amount as well in play. I'm not, you know, really the one to go through that exchange. It did end up in court. There was a settlement. And then ultimately, the new deeds have been recorded with the county, which has enabled New Urban to move forward with changes and develop this sort of missing piece. However, I'm going to borrow Tim Hernandez's slideshow. I didn't prepare one. Ultimately, this was the previous arrangement. And you've seen some of this when the approval for the density for the townhouses came forward in the past. Ultimately, if you watch these parcels, this one here, which is the parking lot adjacent to the church, this is where the new townhomes are going, the townhome parcel. And then Mount Olive's parking lot. Ultimately, the change is that the one next to the church became Mount Olive's. A piece of this parking lot shifted into Atlantic Grove. And then this piece is, of course, where we're going to see the development of townhomes. The change of this invisible property line does affect the design and layout of the existing parking lot. And adjustments will be made on both sides. So we are hoping that both property owners, you know, we can work together to fill that out. But ultimately, this is a ministerial plat to sort of record the new property lines. And, you know, so it's not the plat. I think it's, it's sort of, when that invisible line moves and bifurcates that existing parking lot, you know, we need to get both sides sort of into compliance. And, you know, that we've gotten indications from both property owners that they'd be willing, you know, to talk with each other and work out something together in terms of that. So I'm not sure how to take it from here. The plat really is an implementation of the approved plan. The approved plan wasn't voted on without the deeds actually being checked, that they're recorded and they own the property that they're taking action on. It just has, I think, a difficult history to get to this point. That is.
Okay, so who, who is asking for this to be on the agenda, number one? And number two, what does that have to do with the decision up here?
So the plat is, like I said, it's a ministerial step in approving the site plan that was just done. You have them on the agenda fairly frequently, delineating the new property lines. That has to happen to build anything on these parcels because we, it's just the way that this city unifies the land that is under a site plan because it shares density and parking and FAR and all those things. So this is, I don't know if, I don't know if the city attorney can explain it any better.
She's right. So, you know, plats are really ministerial. All you're doing is checking the boxes to make sure that compliance with Chapter 177 is there. And if it is, you almost have a duty to approve it. I have spoken with Vice Mayor Johnson and I understand the concerns that she has. This is a 19-year history between these two property owners that goes way back to almost every single person here. And so, you know, there's a lot of background to it. But, you know, as I explained, what we're simply doing today is we're taking what is already recorded. You know, these are legal documents that have been recorded. They've been accepted by the clerk of courts and the property appraiser. And all we're doing is taking these legal documents and making sure that the plat is in conformity with those legal documents. So.
Short of doing that, are we putting ourselves in a situation where we might be actually legally doing something that we're, I mean, not doing something that we should be doing and therefore putting somebody in a, jeopardizing their position by our non-movement? I'm asking.
The short answer is yes. You know, the Atlantic Grove Partners does have development-backed expectations for their property. I understand where Commissioner Johnson's coming from, but I also understand that this is, the issues that may be presented are between the two property owners. And absent, you know, if there was something that had been filed in court, injunctive relief, complaint, something to challenge the validity of the, of the legal ownership of the properties, I would probably have a different position and it probably wouldn't be before you. But unfortunately, this has been accepted by both the clerk of courts and the property appraiser. So it puts you in a predicament where, you know, you do have this ministerial duty that you have to comply with. And absent something in the legal realm that could give you something to hang your hat on, I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that I'd have concerns.
So you would recommend that we do not, that you, that we move forward with approval of this and we do not postpone it? Would it be a problem to postpone it for a short period of time?
Our next meeting is not till April, so, you know, even though that doesn't sound like it's that far away, it's enough time for, you know, this applicant to potentially file something in court. The, if Mount Olive is truly challenging validity of the legal documents, they have remedies that they could pursue in court. They could seek injunctive relief. They could try to enjoin the city for moving forward. They could enjoin the clerk of courts from accepting the plat. So there are things, you know, I hesitate to include the city in something that really could potentially be between two property owners. It's, you know, 30 days isn't a long time, but, you know, I'm also not the applicant and the property owner who needs to move forward with their development approvals. There are going to be other things that come before you. You know, construction isn't going to start tomorrow. But, you know, if Mount Olive, and Mount Olive is retained by an attorney who I understand is reviewing all of this. So if the attorney truly has a legal basis to file something in court, there are remedies available to them that could be employed tomorrow if they wanted to.
Okay.
I quite understand.
You do? Okay.
Yes.
So can we, any other questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
All right. And my apologies. I mean, I feel bad because I'm sure that there is something going on, but we might put ourselves in the crosshairs of something that, you understand, yeah, okay. All right, very good. I think there was one other that was pulled off, and that was 6B, which is 7CC. Oh, this was the charging station maintenance agreement. So I just had a question because I didn't ask it during my review with Mr. Moore. I took this off. Who's doing it? Remember, we had talked about that there is plenty of people now that are out there doing these charging stations. And some have great agreements and others have long-term agreements and short-term agreements. And so I just wanted to find out a little bit more about this one.
Okay, so this is actually an agreement that goes back to a Class 2 site plan modification that was made. You'll remember, the OG came through to turn, to change from a standalone bar into a restaurant to Kisa. I did want to mention that Jeff Cosello is here, if you have questions, representing the applicant as well. And then as part of that, they supplied some of their parking and then additional public parking within the FEC right-of-way through a long-term lease. The city, the downtown code requires that the parking that you provide, 3% of it, provide charging stations.
Okay.
When they went to, you know, pull a billing, I'm not exactly sure when, but FEC ultimately said, we don't mind having the parking and all of those things, but we really don't want to have an electric charging station in our right-of-way. I guess, you know, that goes against theirs. And so the Class 2 site plan modification, among some other things, moved the charging station across the street to be installed and to serve one of the on-street parallel spaces in front of the business. I think it's partially on the property and partially within the right-of-way. So this is sort of, it's kind of like a landscape maintenance agreement, but it's because of the charger, the expense of the installation and the ongoing maintenance will be, and that's what this is stating, the responsibility of the owner. So there was no change in the number of spaces. It was simply that the charger serving one space within the FEC right-of-way had to be moved.
Okay, and so that one that was moved, it's not blocking anything like a walkway or anything like?
No, it wasn't. It's fully, it was fully reviewed as part of the Class 2, which looked at all of the sidewalk clearances and landscaping as well.
Got it. Appreciate that explanation. Entertained a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes. Okay, moving on to our 7A. Under the regular agenda, and these are quasi, and at first, 7A and 7B are both.
Hey, I, did someone pull 6E? I circled that.
I circled that. I thought Ms. Johnson pulled that.
No, it was a misunderstanding. It was C.
All right, I apologize. Okay. All right, so the, uh, seven A is a quasi-judicial, um, uh, agended item, so I'm gonna read the quasi-judicial rules into the record. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with the quasi-judicial, judicial rules. The applicant and the city shall, shall be allowed twenty minutes each to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each or a maximum of six minutes of the person representing a group or an organization of people who are present but agree not to speak. The city, commission, the staff, the applicant may be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city or the applicant will be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not be legally made or based on a personal views as to whether a project is a good project or not, nor may a decision be based on the numbers of citizens who support or oppose that particular project. The law requires that all decisions must be made on the basis of whether the project meets the required law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. So we're gonna have a swearing-in process. So if anybody is going to be speaking to resolution, this is seven A, resolution thirty-two dash twenty-two, or resolution thirty-three dash twenty-two, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in.
By the authority vested in me as the notary of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, at this point in time, we're gonna do ex parte communications. We'll start with, uh, Commissioner Bolston.
No.
Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, any ex parte communication?
None.
Okay.
None.
And Commissioner Casell?
I spoke with Ms. Kaiser.
Can't hear you.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm on a different one. Excuse me, seven A. No, none.
Okay, and none for me as well. So at this point in time, we're going to, um, have the city staff enter the project into the record. File into the record, please.
Um, and the agent notice, Development Services Director, for the record, and I'd like to enter file twenty-two-one-five-seven into the record. And Mr. Cavelli is here for, with a presentation for the applicant.
Thank you.
Mike Cavelli, Cavelli Design, twelve oh-nine South Swinton. I apologize for the, uh, the, the first slide. Staff was being very proactive and wanted to get this on the agenda before April because of the changes, so they took my SBRAB presentation and put it in there. So thank you very much for staff being so efficient.
Very good.
Um, you have, you have two items before you, for this one item, and it's two different waivers. One is basically for a corner setback waiver, and the other one is for, uh, dealing with the civic site. Um, the, the property is located on the east side of, of northeast Sixth Avenue and south of northeast Fourth Street. Um, the property is vacant. I think years ago, it was a car wash. There's a transmission shop to the north of this and office buildings across the street. Um, the, the first part in terms of the waiver of the corner setback, um, this project started out with thirty-four units, and we're down to thirty now, uh, as a result of having to do a lot of things with access, uh, the civic site. We've, we've gone through many iterations on this, um, and we think we, we finally have this. And then near the end of our process with site planning, the issue came up about a corner clip, so here we are. Um, essentially, what we have is, you, you see the yellow line is where the corner clip would go. Um, if you see the dashed curved line, that was where the original right-of-way line is, and we met the setbacks for that. If you look, go from the face of the building towards federal highway is on, at the top of the screen, we meet all of the setback requirements, the step-back requirements, and all of those things. We also meet all of the streetscape requirements. Actually, we exceed the sidewalk requirements for, for the streetscape. Likewise, on, on Fourth, which would be the, the right side, we also meet all the setbacks, the step-backs, the, the streetscape requirements, the clear pedestrian zone requirements, all of that. The only issue we have is right on the very corner because of the, um, the step, the, uh, corner clip. This is probably a much better view of, of how you could see, um, how this lines up. The yellow line along the sidewalk is where that corner clip is. And the vertical yellow line is just an extension of the corners of those balconies so that you can see where, where that, where that goes in, in, in place. And, and, and once again, um, you'll see that the sides of the buildings have been, have been detailed. There's no blank, um, walls or, or anything like that, and all of the streetscape is maintained. And this just gives you another view down the, the sidewalks, so you can see that the pedestrian clear zone is there and the streetscape standards are there. So when you're, when you're doing a, a waiver of this type, you have required findings for, for section two-point-four-point-seven-B-five, that the waiver would not adversely affect the neighboring area. We're maintaining all of the, the setbacks and, uh, and the, in, in the, um, streetscape requirements, so we're not really affecting the, the neighborhood area. The sidewalks are remaining clear and as per code. The waiver is not significantly diminished provisions of pu- public facilities. We're not affecting any public facilities in this. Waiver will not create an unsafe condition. We're maintaining all of the sidewalks and setbacks and everything, so we're not creating an unsafe situation. And a waiver does not result in granting of a special privilege. I believe this has been asked for on other projects, so this is no special, special privilege. Since this is in the CBD, uh, there are another list of criteria that you would, you would review in terms of, is this appropriate? The waiver would not result in inferior pedestrian experience along a primary street such as exposing parking garage or large expansive blank walls. I just showed you a, a rendering that actually shows that, that the blank walls do not exist, that they've all been detailed. And, um, it, it is on federal highway, which is a primary street, and, and we do meet all of the, the, the clear zone, the curb zones, all, all of those, those requirements. So there, there's no degradation of that for, for this item. The waiver will not allow creation of signi- significant incompatibilities with nearby buildings or land uses. Um, there's, there's really no u, no effect on any surrounding buildings for this, so that positive findings can be made for that. The waiver not erode the connectivity of the street and sidewalk network or negatively impact any adopted bicycle pedestrian master plan. We've maintained the sidewalks and, on federal highway, they're actually wider. Um, and the waiver will not reduce quality of civic open space. Civic open space is down the street, so it, it doesn't affect this. So for, for those two items with the eight criteria, you could make positive findings for these. Um, I don't know if you wanna have questions on this, or I'll go to the, to the next item, and we can do it all at the same time, whatever, okay? All right, so, so the next item is with regards to the civic site. And the, the section that, that we're dealing with is section four-point-four-thirteen-G-three-D, which, which states that civic open spaces shall be lined by building facades or streets on all sides. In order to provide oversight of the space, buildings facing civic open space shall contain active uses. Parking lots, parking garages, and storage areas are not considered active uses. If you look in, in the code, they give the, they give this example that you have streets on two sides, and the civic site is, is in the, in the red square, and you can have extra civic site area, which is the other green, and then the hashed area would be the building. It, so, so when they say it's lined by buildings, they're saying that the building is adjacent to it, according to the, to this. In this particular case, um, we're, we have the, the civic site, uh, and we, and we've elected to do it mid-block. And the, and the reason we've, we've done it mid-block is, if you look at the plan, if, if we were to move the civic site on the corner, um, you would have a big, long row of buildings. And, you know, we're doing this in, in, in an effort to alleviate a canyon effect, if you will, and we hear that all the time about all the different projects along, along, uh, the different corridors. Um, and, and so the civic site actually is an air and light feature as well, so it's, it's not, um, an area that is closed in by, by buildings. Um, we feel that it's much more inviting in this particular case. Let's, let's look at the, the items in the code section. Um, the first item that says civic open space shall be lined by building facades or streets on all sides. The, the operative word is lined by, by building facades. Um, if you look at the item in the code that I showed you, it, it shows the buildings adjacent to the civic site. If, if you take, uh, that as the literal definition of lined, then, then these buildings are not lining the civic site. But, um, if you, but if you, you look at this, in, in terms of the way this is, there are seven buildings around this. So when you go to the second item, in, in here, it says, "In order to provide oversight of the space, buildings facing civic open spaces shall contain active uses." Now it's buildings facing civic sites, and in this case, we have seven units facing the civic sites. But then when you go to the next section, it says that parking lots are not considered active uses. The, the motor court is, I guess, part, considered a parking lot, so, or part of the parking, driving aisle to get into the garages. So in, in, in this particular case, you would say that, that that's really the issue. We comply with the, the top of the page, which is Sixth Avenue. We comply with the right side, but the issue is, is, is what do we, what do, does lined by on all sides and what does, was, um, oversight mean? And I think in this particular case, this meets the, the spirit of, of that in terms of, we have many eyes on, on this. And this gives you a better view of, of what this would be like. And as you can see, there are a lot of windows looking down on this. Um, so there is a lot of oversight, and, and the civic site, you know, in, in my opinion, meets the spirit of, of, of what that section really means in terms of locating the civic site. And this is just some, some views in terms of, you can, you can see into it from federal highway, and as you come in the entry road, you can see into it also, so it has some natural surveillance at the street level as well as from the, the surrounding area. So, in terms of required findings, um, you have, the waiver will not adversely affect the neighboring ar- area. We think that this is, is a big plus for the neighboring area, and some of the office space has the ability to use this for, for lunches and, and, and things like that. Um, the, the waiver will not significantly diminish provisions of public facilities. Uh, there is a, the only public facility might be, there's a water fountain with a dog-watering fountain in it, so there will be some water required for it, but not any significant, um, uh, need. So, so you, positive findings can be made for that. Um, the waiver not create an unsafe condition. Um, we feel like having this civic site in this location provides the most natural surveillance of any, anywhere else if it was on the corner. Um, there's only two units that actually look over it, and, and so, and it's on a corner, and there's a transmission shop across the street, so we're, w- we don't think it's really an, an ideal place for, for that, that civic site. Um, and, and so we feel like it's a much safer situation being in the location it's in because at the street level, you have natural surveillance, and at the upper levels, people looking down, you have surveillance. And the waiver is not resulting in granting a special privilege, which anybody could ask for this same waiver. And again, because this is in the CBD, um, the waiver not, not resulting in, in an inferior pedestrian experience along a primary street such as exposing parking garages or long expansive walls. You've seen that, that there are no large expansive walls, all the, the, the adjacent walls are detailed. And it, and it actually does, um, enhance the pedestrian experience. It, it becomes a mid-block, uh, place for stopping for biking or walking your dog or, or walking. Um, so we feel like it, it actually increases the pedestrian experience along this corridor. The waiver shall not allow the creation of significant incompatibilities with nearby buildings or uses. This will enhance the compatibility in terms of nearby office space can use this during the day. Neighbors can walk and stop and, and, and rest in this area. Um, so, so I think it's a positive that, that this is in this location. The waiver will not erode the connectivity of the street and sidewalk network or nevi- negatively impact any adopted bicycle pedestrian master plan. Again, it's, it's a place where anyone biking or walking can stop and, and rest or, and, and just relax for a while. And a waiver will not reduce the quality of the civic open space, and I think this enhances the, the quality of the civic open space. So, um, on, on these sections, positive findings can be made. Those are the criteria that would you review. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions on either of the items.
Thank you, Mr. Cavelli. We're gonna...
Yep.
The city do theirs.
Okay, so, I always need my notes. So these are two separate waivers, and they need to be, um, decided through two separate actions. So although we've put them together in item seven A, um, there are two resolutions before you. Um, let's see. Okay. So this is the location, uh, that it's located on the northbound Federal. Um, there is an alley that is open and active behind this. It's interesting, some of the, um, neighbors to the east actually have units that face and take, um, access from that alley. Um, to the north, as Mr. Cavelli stated, there is, um, a, um, auto use that is fairly intense, that is still there, that is not commonly found in downtown at this time. Um, so it is within the central business district. It has a commercial core land use. I stole his diagram because it's better than mine. Um, so there are, there, so, so resolution thirty-two-twenty-two is related to the setback waiver. Um, again, um, so, and then, um, thirty-three-twenty-two is related to the waiver regarding civic open space. We'll take them separately. This is a thirty-one unit townhome development. Um, you know, they've actually organized the block to sort of split it in half with sort of their own little private alley in the middle, and some of the units, um, are located along the alley to the rear. Um, I think, you know, that's part of the issue, is that it's a little bit of a front-back situation around the civic open space. That I'll go over in a minute. Um, so the resolution thirty-two-twenty-two is the setback, and thirty-three-twenty-two is the civic open space. So I think you got a very good overview of the situation with the civic open space. Ultimately, um, you know, over the years, the city has addressed corners differently. It used to just be an easement. Now we actually take, um, a corner clip, a twenty-by-twenty corner clip, and move that into the right-of-way to ensure that there's adequate space for, you know, ramps and crossings and all, all of those things. When that happens, the property line moves, and the setback is actually taken from that new property line. This is probably the third time we've seen this since, since downtown, and I know that tells me that I need to bring forward an adjustment to the code. It's just, the list is quite long, and it's just not something that we've managed, um, to bring to the top yet. So, um, that's ultimately the issue around this one. Um, the criteria for changing any setbacks in the central business district is that, to make sure that there's still adequate space in the streetscape. It's a minimum of fifteen. Um, in this case, um, the, um, streetscape that remains exceeds, um, the minimum requirement, so there's plenty of room. There's, um, no obstruction that would create a safety issue with visibility triangles. Um, none of the impacts, there's no impact to public infrastructure. Um, all of the building remains on the property, although the upper balconies come forward, um, all the way to the new property line. But, you know, we typically allow open-air elements to encroach at some level, any, at any rate. We've recently approved a similar, although not exactly the same amount, PR two, um, came in, I wanna say last year, with something similar, um, having the corner clip moved. So it's not something we've seen before, and you know the, the, um, the, um, findings that have to be considered through that. Um, this was taken to the SBRAB for recommendation prior to your review. On February ninth, um, the recommendation six-to-one to approve, um, this waiver request. The civic open space, um, it, to me, I think, is, is maybe not quite as clear and doesn't have a precedence or any kind of consideration that we've done in similar, um, buildings. Um, we have a couple, we have one civic open space that is located in the body of the project, and it is, um, the hotel that's next to the Plum Building on the northbound Federal, south of Atlantic, I'm forgetting the name of it. I'm sorry. That one has...
Marriott Courtyard?
Yes, thank you. Um, that one has the civic open space, not at a corner, but it does actually, the building wraps it. There isn't drive aisles surrounding it. Um, so why do we care what's around our civic open space? Um, the concept of oversight and public access are both part of why these rules are there. Um, this is publicly owned, or publicly accessible but privately maintained space, and in order to make sure that, um, people using the space are in a septet or safe, you know, environment, um, they tend, you know, the code requires that they're structured with sort of this natural oversight windows and doors overlooking them through facades or streets where passersby, you know, can easily sort of look into the spaces. But they're also designed to provide relief from mass, and so there is, um, you know, to be considered that not being on the corner and being in the body of the project does help break down, you know, the building as it, these tend to be long, this is a long site, so there's a benefit to that.
Thank you.
So, um, you know, whether the drive aisle provides the same natural oversight that So, um, you know, whether the drive aisle provides the same natural oversight that a street, public street would, I think is questionable. And then in terms of facades lining it, you know, these are garage doors that are behind a drive aisle. And so while, you know, it's, it's, the way that it's designed may meet the intent and the oversight of the upper floors, you may, might determine that that's, um, adequate to make sure it's a safe space. Um, you know, the building doesn't come forward and actually, you know, provide that direct connection. So those are the things to consider while you're reviewing it. Um, and, um, and so ultimately in terms of the waiver for this one, there is a criteria that's, you know, exactly built for this. Is this design solution equal to or better than the code provisions that are there? And, and is it, um, resulting in a superior and excellent civic open space? Um, this was also considered by the SBRAB, um, at the same meeting and, but they had a unanimous recommendation for approval for this configuration. And so that concludes my presentation. I actually think the applicant has better images, so you may want to pull that one back up if there's any questions. And that, that concludes my presentation.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. So this is a quasi judicial hearing and what we're going to do is open it up to the public at this point in time. So if anybody would like to step forward and speak to either of these resolutions, that's thirty-two dash twenty-two and thirty-three dash twenty-two, please step forward, state your name, address, indicate that you were sworn in, and you will have three minutes. Don't come all at once. Seeing no movement. I'm going to close the public comment portion of this, um, uh, procedure and we're going to move to cross-examination, either the... Okay, so...
I have none.
Okay, and, and rebuttal testimony neither? Okay, and there's an indication that neither the, the city staff nor the applicant have cross or the rebuttal. So we are moving then to the board. Any questions, concerns you'd like to start?
I guess it's just a question on whether or not this is, this is better, right? Because obviously if the civic space was on the corner, they probably wouldn't need the setback and we wouldn't be here looking at either of these.
I thought the same thing, but it's a long building then.
Right, so is this better, right? And, uh, and I think it is. And, and, and by the way, the one concern I think that Anthea brought up was in reference to buildings being wrapped around the civic space. Well, you know, I've been out to the, the courtyard and Aloft does have something similar as well. And although sometimes that could feel like there's presence, it also feels like a dead end. Um, when you're in a space like that with walls all around you in a park, rather than having a way to walk through it and be out on the other side. So actually I think this feels safer than having buildings around, uh, all three sides of a park mid-block. Um, so I, I would be in favor of both of these because I think it's a, it's a better option for our city.
Very good, thank you. Vice Mayor? Nothing?
Nothing.
Motion to...
Second of discussion.
Okay. I had a couple of questions. So, um, I don't disagree with, uh, what, um, uh, Mr. Ballston explained. I am going to ask the question of Anthea. Why do we ask that they be, you know, kind of with the surrounding? Is it just because of the, the ability for people to look over and to kind of keep an eye out on things? What would be the purpose? Why do we have it in our rules that it would be in that type of a setting?
Okay, so you can imagine this space if there were no windows overlooking it on either side. Like a facade by definition is, um, a building that faces a street front. Um, our code also says that, that a facade that is located, so for example, if this was pulled forward, the civic open space is considered part of your building frontage, like the park at the corner of, um, Worthing Place, for example. Those are all front. So it's truly just that two, it's a twofold issue. It's, it's providing a natural surveillance where the activity surrounding the site is part of what keeps it safe. So it's not just PD being able to see when they drive by. And then it's also, um, these are meant to be publicly accessible during daylight hours. And so by positioning them in such a way that the public feels like they are allowed to step into the space and sit on the bench and use the water fountain and wait for a friend, whether or not their friend lives there or they're waiting for somebody across the street, all of those things are why those rules are there. Now waivers exist because if ultimately positioning it here to take what is otherwise a very long site and, you know, kind of break it down is, is better in that particular instance, um, then that's the ability for, for this board to decide.
Okay, and then are there any bus shelters out in front of this? I mean, that would make it more of a place of...
I don't remember the review.
All right, and then I...
We do, okay, so Public Works assesses, um, the bike, the, the, uh, bus shelter, um, fees and costs and stops as part of the TAC review. I'm sorry, I didn't look at that before this, so I don't remember off the top of my head.
It's, it, you know, listen, it's...
He doesn't either.
Okay, I just was curious because it, it seemed like, you know, they're not going to put a bus, obviously, shelter on a corner typically. It's generally mid, you know, mid-block. So that's why I was thinking if there was one, it makes more sense, you know, even for where it is than...
A nice dignified place to wait.
And then one other question that I had, because is, is it four stories that's allowed here or three?
Um, so this is three. There's a pretty substantial setback that is required at the top of the third floor. So, um...
I'm looking at this and it almost looks like four stories.
Right, and these are four, I'm trying to see if I can, I'm going to use your...
I don't have any images of the...
Because you're going to see it step back in the...
No, I saw it step back and I'm just ca, I'm questioning how tall this is.
Yeah, so they, they are allowed to be four stories. And then it, it steps back and I believe that there's roof access. I will say this, that when these two waivers are decided, the next step is it goes back to SBRAB for approval where the details like the bus shelter and the ultimate final design will be decided and appeal on, and appear on an appealables list for this board. But, you know, the applicant is here, so...
And then...
You don't have roof terraces at all. He says no roof access, okay.
Okay, and then, um, have you had anybody from the neighboring communities that are lining up behind it, um, coming out and saying anything? Was there any, uh, comments? No?
We haven't yet.
Okay.
But SBRAB again, this, it's gone through once and then it'll go again.
Very good. All right, good. And so we have a...
Can we just clarify the motion? Because there's, there has to be two seconds.
It has to be two, right.
Motion to approve resolution number thirty-two dash twenty-two.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Cassell.
Yes.
Mr. Ballston.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Petolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Motion to approve resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-two.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ballston. Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Petolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Ms. Cassell.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good to see you, Mr. Cavelli. All right, so moving on to seven B, which is ratification of emergency regulations.
Motion approved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Sorry. Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Petolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Ms. Cassell. Mr. Ballston.
Yes.
All right, moving on to seven C, which is the parking curbside management update.
Okay. Anthea Giannone, Development Services Director for the record. Um, this is one of the mobility initiatives that was set forward in the comprehensive plan. Um, this, um, effort has had, you know, had a bit of a rocky start because we kicked it off and then COVID, um, impacted a lot of progress. Um, but it's, it's back on track and moving forward. And so we wanted to bring an update to you. Um, the, um, the consultant that's helping us is WGI and Lisa, um, there she is. Nisselson? I'm never going to get it. I want there to be an L in her name so badly. Nisselson, she's, she'll say it if you need her, I'm sorry. I'm massacring it. I should be more sympathetic given my name. At any rate, so... So, um, ultimately, we just want to give you a preview of the preliminary, um, recommendations and some of the feedback we've gotten from the advisory boards moving forward. Um, she's here, she's listening. Brian Rousher, who's our transportation planner, is here. Missy Barletto from Public Works is here. We're all part of this group that is, um, kind of moving, um, this plan forward. Um, so ultimately, the parking curbside management plan, um, was really an effort to, um, manage the competing interests that, you know, are affecting downtown mobility, not just vehicular mobility, but also what's happening at our curbs and on our sidewalks. Um, there was, um, a main focus on, um, obviously the parking supply and the strategies and how we manage the parking supply, but, um, also, um, the valet parking system and, you know, other strategies related to parking needs downtown. I know we talk a lot about parking in this city and it is really important, but sometimes I do feel that we need to put parking in perspective. Um, it is a, a tool for all the things we do, um, but nobody ever went to a great place and said, "Thank goodness, there was a sea of asphalt there for me to park in." So part of what makes our parking demand is how great our city is and how it's evolving. And so it's a constant balance of how to, um, provide it while we maintain everything that's beautiful about downtown Delray Beach. One of the questions that came up frequently in this, um, in this effort is, um, was focused more on private development and how much parking they're bringing in and are they really pulling their own weight? And how do you get these rules anyway? Um, and so I think it's important to know that, um, there is, um, a whole avenue of study in terms of what parking ratios should be required. However, no matter what you require, you have to locally calibrate it. So for example, we have a very different restaurant parking requirement on the Ave than we do, um, in other areas of the city. Just know that's where there's a ton of demand. Um, we have to be really careful using what is an industry standard because industry standards tend to be geared more towards suburban environments where you have to take a car for every trip. And those standards over time haven't always served downtowns. And so we take parking really seriously here and, you know, we're always adjusting it. As part of this effort, the, um, consultant and staff looked back over about, um, twenty years' worth of pu, planning related to downtown and all areas of downtown. And all the way from the original downtown master plan, which I was actually a part of for Treasure Coast, I know, right? So it's a little bit rough to see the numbers sometimes. And then all the way through the comp plan. Um, a lot of things have changed over time. You know, um, Uber, Lyft, these types of, of services were not on the map at that point. And where those people are accessing transportation, where they're alighting on the curb and where they're catching, um, the, the rides, uh, all of those things, um, impact things, but they also change, you know, how we're moving around downtown and how much parking we need. People are moving a little bit differently, but we're Florida and we always need to accommodate a vehicular route. So, you know, we've got all of these things we're trying to balance. Downtown is revitalizing. I know that we sometimes don't want more people to come here, but, you know, we truly are a success story. Where we were twenty years ago with the downtown lights constantly blinking because you didn't want to slow down or stop, you know, we've really come a long way. We have a lot more work to do, but, um, you know, we're a great place to be and that's part of the demand that's coming forward. And there's things too, in terms of streets, that streets, um, can be flexible. As new development comes in, it brings in a lot of parking with it. You know, those are garages and, and the mass and whether they're underground and how we're going to de-water, all of those things are factors, but they are bringing a parking supply with them. And so the analysis through this study, um, did a number of things. There was a lot of data related to the two thousand nineteen parking transactions and citations. Everything was tracked and collated. Of course, then we had our blip there where everything changed for a while, unprecedented change, right? Um, there was a twenty-twenty parking space inventory. I can tell you that on that downtown master plan job, one of my jobs was counting the spaces in downtown and I was manually doing it in a car. We've actually gotten a lot, um, more sophisticated. Um, Public Works has brought in a lot of different, um, types of technologies which allow us to see not just how many spaces we have, but how often they're turning over and all of those things. Um, we also have a consultant who's gone out into the field before and after COVID to sort of verify, uh, if, what, what does our data look like on the ground? Where are we seeing the cues? Where are we seeing the impacts and other things like that? We had a, because we had to shift to kind of an online resource for a while, I mean, also because this is the future, right? Or now, um, there was an online survey and it was quite successful. You know, it's, we had over six hundred responses and most of them largely completed the survey. And that gave us a lot of, of information in terms of, are you willing to walk if your parking space is cheaper? And how far would that be? And so most people told us that they're willing to walk two or three blocks if the space is a little bit cheaper. So other people on that walk, right? How safe do you feel? Because that has a lot to do with how far you're willing to walk, right? So, um, and I think, uh, you know, everyone here who's got fingerprints on downtown should feel good that, that the vast majority of people feel pretty safe in our downtown. So that's a success story too. Um, so here's, here's the general observations that, um, have been brought forward to us, that, um, some of the equal or free pricing that we have, and then there's other places that you pay, um, it's, it's ending up sort of encouraging cruising and circling and some of that congestion. If you have paid parking and you aren't managing and it gets to, um, even if, if the parking gets too high of demand and you're adjacent to an area that's free, we have to be very mindful of whether or not there's going to be impacts, particularly if they're residential neighborhoods. So we, like, we have the Marina District where we have parking permits. We might see more of that need moving forward. So it's just something to be paying attention to. On-street parking transactions were twice that of our lots and garages. People like that convenience if they can get it. And, you know, we have to start thinking about accommodating golf carts, which are becoming more and more prominent to circle downtown. Um, east of, um, the bridge, we have utilization rates that are quite high. Um, the lots are usually filled to eighty percent by noon. On-street is in that sweet spot and, on the weekends of at least a ninety percent utilization rate. Um, so that's part of what we're looking at. Downtown, we were struggling, I guess we're going to say west of the bridge, um, because it's all part of downtown. Um, we're still looking, um, during the day, mostly at like seventy percent utilization rates for on-street. We go up to that ninety percent between seven and ten in some places. Um, most of the area west of Swinton still has a tremendous amount of availability. We have some projects coming in the pipeline that are going to absolutely pull that energy westward. Um, Sunday Village, if you are interested in Sunday Village, it is on the Historic Preservation Board agenda tomorrow night. The modifications coming in there. Um, and we have, um, we just presented, you know, more townhouses coming in on Atlantic Grove, so that energy is going to start rolling westward, which is exciting. Right now, there's a lot of parking available. In order to, I, I know this board is sometimes charged with, when do we need to build a garage? When do we need to build more parking? We want to see a consistent utilization rate of ninety percent before that investment is made. And, you know, quite frankly, we're not quite there yet. This data is still telling us this. That's on on-street. Now we get to the garages. And our garages are free during the day. There's a five-dollar flat fee after four. Um, you know, we just still have a pretty solid amount of spaces that are available over there. Um, you may have to go all the way to the top, but, but there are still, there are still some there. Um, the parking lots that are east of Swinton Avenue, um, are, that are free or have a ninety, a nine-hour-plus parking area are usually at capacity all day long. Those are very hard to get spaces in. Um, and then, um, Feudersville is busy midday. Old School Square, even at the Friday peak, still had some, some things. Valets, we already know so much about our valets, right? We know where they are, they're dispersed along the Ave. Um, what's interesting is they can be a contributor to congestion, but they are not the sole cause of congestions. They're, they're one of many factors related to people cruising just because they want to look around, people cruising, looking for a space, a better space, a closer space. So, um, then the other things too, to keep in mind, commercial operations. Um, you know, trucks are not allowed on Atlantic Avenue. This pretty much requires constant enforcement, you know? PD gets it under control and then they, they look a different direction and they come back again because they get a new driver or something. Um, but we are starting to see impacts on other streets. Northeast and Southeast Second are having deliveries. Um, there's just, I think, uh, some considerations to be made as to what restrictions we need to place. Maybe other streets need them. Maybe there's hours, maybe we need to talk vehicle size limits, things like that. Sorry, I don't have the criteria timing, I was trying really fast. Okay, so the recommendations that we have coming forward. People parking don't have a lot of incentive to use the garages after four because the garage charges and if you're lucky to get one of those great spaces, the nine-hour parking, you know? So people will eventually park, but they're, but they're circling and that's not helping downtown traffic. So some of the short-term recommendations is that we really need to use parking strategies to, you know, not every space is created equally. The best spaces should cost the most, it's just the reality. And then, um, we really should avoid building a garage until the utilization data warrants the investment. To make those lots that are maybe a little further out, we should consider connecting them using, um, trans, public transportation. I know that's another topic we have for another day, but. And then making sure all the pedestrian routes, lighting, shade, crosswalks, all of those things are in place to make it very easy to walk those two to three blocks that our survey says people will do. Um, and then enhancing wayfinding. This will come up again and again and again. I'm doing something, there it is, sorry. I think it is really important to point out that timeline of plans. We see over and over again the same recommendations coming back to us by professionals. So when we look at plan alignment, um, the Gibbs Shopability Study gives us very similar advice, right? Figure out where your employees are going to park. Limit the on-street spaces. Charge double for the, for the more convenient spaces. All of those, those things. We also are seeing the, the impacts of technology. There's recommendations there. Our consultants very well-versed in terms of ways that this is coming towards us. It's going to change the way we park. We need to add wayfinding. That comes up over and over again. And we've talked about doing it downtown, but the wayfinding leading you to where parking is available to try to stop the circulating is, is really important. And we also need to keep expanding our EV spaces. I didn't know this was going to do it this way. So plan alignment, um, you know, we need to figure out how to get our big developers that are providing parking that is open to their customers. And our parking, it needs to be coordinated for direction. Let's see, our, this, you saw this in the DDA memo. So we need to have some, um, just a cooperative strategy for all of that parking to be easy to find. So tech again, uh, uh, the, you know, things are changing so much in terms of, of how we, we park. There are different app, mobile phone applications. And in the long term, I think, um, we were talking BMW already has this. You can actually just go into your car and if the, if, if the city is linked up, they can figure out where the spaces are available just in the car. You know, I have a big car, apparently parallel parks itself, but I'm old enough that I had to do that on my test. My daughter apparently will not, so, you know, there's all, all kinds of ways we're changing. Valet, this is a big issue. And this took a lot of analysis and just observation. And so we have a recommendation in the short term to consolidate the number of valet stands to try to relieve the congestion. There are some alternative, alternatives in the recommendations for consideration. One is to use potentially a centralized valet, um, service that, um, you know, can be managed holistically to create an, an, an interchange so that you could leave your car at one, pick it up at another. So in a way, increase level of service, but that's going to require more management and, and overall, you know, plan for managing those stands. And once again, we have a recommendation to remove the valet queues from the Ave and move them onto the side streets, which we've seen this recommendation before. So trade-offs as well. Trying, um, to, um, you know, go through all, all the staff time and the work that that will take to, to implement changes to long-term, people down, um, folks downtown, things like that. Okay, programmable streets. So we only have so much right of way and ultimately the decision is how do we want to program it? Um, a midterm recommendation is to consider whether the parking, um, on both sides of Atlantic needs to remain and we could expand the sidewalk forward to have more sidewalk, more dining area, more landscape area. Um, and also, you know, that changes where you queue up for valet, that changes people stopping to parallel park. But that also, you know, changes, um, the way the street looks now and it's an important street, so we do these things carefully. Long-term, a question of, of whether there should be things like, um, eastbound traffic, um, restricting it during peak hours, um, redirecting people and ultimately whether eliminating through traffic would, would be a good idea and restricting it to transit, commercial and emergency vehicles, that's a pretty radical idea. But it's something that's discussed in the plan. So again, we may need to protect certain areas as certain places see a lot of development activity. But we also need to figure out relaunch or try again or have a purposeful plan for where our downtown employees will park. There are a number of ideas about this with, um, spaces in our garages that are underutilized, periphery lots. But also whether or not we need to consider, um, sort of the, the requirement for private places to distinguish where the employees would park within them. That becomes, I think, difficult to enforce, but it's that idea that, you know, the parking ratio you're providing is supposed to also accommodate your employees and just projecting them off-site is starting to be a concern for some of downtown. These reviews were taken in the Parking Management Advisory Board. There is a memo attached to your packet for you to review. There was a lot of overlap between what the different boards, um, thought. The DDA has, um, an attachment and the minutes are in your backup for you to read as we move forward. Some things were very easily consensus, the wayfinding comes up over and over and over again. The idea of zones that reflect the demand and supply and the cost. And then, um, there are some issues of, um, long-term parking lots. The DDA recommends maintaining the one that is at the intersection of Down, of Atlantic Avenue and FEC. That's probably one of those really valuable lots though. And it's really close to the Old School Square Garage. And so whether that should continue to be a long-term and expensive lot, I think, is a, is one point of, of not consistent discussion between, between comments.
Which, which lot was that? Railroad lot? Okay.
So, um, you know, it's great that employees can park there for nine hours, but it's also right in the heart of downtown. So, um, over and over again, the valets need to improve their level of service. You know, for, if, not just for the people trying to not park and get past them, but ultimately our customers that are coming into downtown. Planning and zoning board heard this in November. They also echoed the need for wayfinding and they also echoed, I think the DDA also said this, that private developments need to be using a consistent way to guide people to parking as well. They're very interested in the automated, automated parking garage that is under construction on Third. That's not up and running and we had decided to wait on expanding that use until we understood the impacts, both sound, noise, queuing, things like that. Again, employee parking designated somewhere. And then more management and the perimeter areas. Concerns again, commercial and unloading. In this case, they brought up federal highway starting to be impacted by loading. Underpricing of parking generally across the central business district. And, um, we're not supportive at all about closing Atlantic Avenue to traffic. And I believe that is consistent with the DDA, which only thought that should happen for events, but not for anything more aggressively. So our next steps are, if you want to respond to any of this, our consultant is here and listening and available if you want to ask questions. We would receive a draft plan after this input and then it will go back through our advisory boards and ultimately back to you. And that's it. Sorry.
To the commission. Go ahead.
I'm looking at next steps there and I don't see it coming back before us, before the plan adoption. This is.
We can, if you want.
Yeah, I, I can't see dive, diving into all of this tonight. I mean, I have.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think that maybe we might have some points, but, um, again, I think that it's going to go back to the boards and you're going to have more information and bring it back around. Is that correct? But we're not going to be part of that until the very end. Is that how it works or?
I mean, that, that's how it works or if you want us to schedule it for a workshop once the draft is.
I think it's probably a good idea for a workshop.
Yeah, I agree.
What do you think?
I agree.
Whatever Shirley wants.
Well, you know the answer to that. Given.
This is an annual thing, so yes.
But before that draft is brought to us for a workshop, they are here and listening. And so there's anything that stood out to you, you know? And if you don't think of it now, you can always contact us.
Absolutely.
I mean, the top thing, uh, and everyone agrees is the wayfinding. So an update on that, I know it's being funded by the CRA, so, um, you know, receiving an update on that would be, be necessary. And, and having a conversation in regards to, in regards to the garage. I mean, you know, making the garage free, uh, obviously there, that would be a loss of revenue. But building a new garage is a lot more expensive. And so whatever we can do to drive people to that garage, and if it meant losing out on a little bit of revenue, that's maybe made up somewhere else, we got to get people in that garage. And you know who we need to get in there? The employees.
Well, that's what I was going to say, and that's that nine-hour lot and I was going to recommend that we, 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 we flip that. I know that originally that was really, um, poo-pooed and the main reason why was because people didn't feel comfortable. But, you know, I mean, listen, that's prime territory there and I think that we need to, we need to maybe flip that.
Yeah, aggressive as we can be to drive people. And whether it's $1 or $5, you still got to go over to the machine and do all of that and you're rushing in and you're trying to get to when your shift starts. So that's some, so those are the, the, the top items that I think need to be, need to be addressed. And then I'm aligned with, uh, a majority of the Downtown Development Authority's recommendations.
Very good.
So I see the employees a little differently. The employees are parking at the railroad lot, they're parking at the lot across the street from the tennis, as I see them. They're taking advantage of the free spots.
Sure.
I think a lot of the apprehension is, at least from the people I've spoken to, they don't want to walk into the garage up in a dark area with cash. So they're taking their tips with them. One thing that wasn't mentioned, I think, is very important, and I get contacted about this all the time. We have the city lots, then we have these private lots. And the private lots, it's a lot more expensive than what the city's charging. And the problem is there's confusion on
That's right.
the private lot owners in the city and everyone's thinking, why is the city ripping me off?
That's right, or why are they booting me or why are they actually being so predatory?
Is there a way to differentiate what a private lot owner identification or, or something? Because someone that wouldn't live here, I wouldn't know the difference.
How about just a big sign that says, park at your own risk?
I see that as a big issue. The commercial loading, uh, in front of Salt and, uh, the new place, that's a disaster every day about 11 o'clock.
Yeah.
These trucks are just stopping wherever they want. Swinton across from, um, Sunday Village. They just park in the middle of the road, they don't care.
Block a lane.
Yes. I would ticket all these people. I would, I, I just think that is a problem. Uh, the railroad lot, I know in Thea when we met, God knows how long ago, I, I, there should be some charge, that's premium, premium parking. People just, you know, stay there for 10 hours a day. So I think those are just three issues. And the other thing I would throw out there is, I just got back from, uh, Southern California. Santa Monica does an amazing job with their signs on which lots have spots and how, the numbers and arrows, whatever. That would be a great model for you to take a look at in Santa Monica, California. It was just very easy to, to get around there, so just a couple of comments and I look forward to Shirley's workshop on this.
All right. Commissioner Kassal?
Yeah, I share all the concerns. I think one of those private lots has a sign and it says, City Lots.
Yes.
It's because the company is called City Lots, so it's very confusing.
Very confusing.
Yeah, um, and I just, I would emphasize as well that, um, that we should uh, try and enforce those two to three-hour time limits. And, you know, I've been speaking to Attorney Jalen and Laura about Pineapple Grove. The small businesses are being so impacted by lack of parking over there, it's concerning. I'm concerned we're going to lose some of those small businesses. So yes, I think we need to make sure that everybody has a plan for where their employees are going to park. And then I, I, you know, the centralized valet, I think the mayor brought that up last year. And it does sound like a really good idea for a lot of reasons, but mainly what you speak of, which is that you could go one place, walk.
Get up for another.
Ave and pick up your car at the other end. So I'm in favor, I can't wait to see what's next on this. I'd like to get going quickly.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
Nothing, okay. Um, I have a few things that I wanted to. Parking, no. Okay, so I just had a few things. I think that we are low on our cost meters. I, I think we've talked about that. I think that the, um, the Parking Management Board is, has brought that up several times. Wayfinding, I think, is, is, is key. We're still sitting waiting for that, but, um, in coordination with the businesses that have parking too, um, their own parking, I think we have to figure out how to do that so that we're not getting a lot of the overflow that should be going there. I agree with the employees parking, you know, when, when a, when a developer comes in and they say that they're going to park to all their employees and all of a sudden they're not parking their employees. Those employees are looking for parking in the city of Delray Beach. So they're really not designating those spaces for the employees, even though they're having to, you know, give us spaces for employees. So that's something that we need to figure out. How do we deal with that in the future? How are we guaranteeing that we're not all of a sudden taking on this great number of employees from a new biz, uh, new development that just went in? We're dealing with that on several different, uh, levels. And I think that it's unfair because they're selling it to us in one way and we're actually getting something very different. The city lots called, calling themselves city lots. And then by the way, they also ticket the cars as if it looks like a city ticket. Cause I get those calls too, like, why are you ticketing me? And it's not even our ticketing, um, and, and the, and the threats that come along with it. I don't know. I, I think there's got to be some limitation to predatory practices in our town and we need to draw that in or, or, um, bring that to where it isn't so predatory. They can't do what they're doing, um, to our, cause again, they, a lot of people think it's us. It's not. Commercial loading, very important. It's not just happening downtown. Driving down, uh, Congress Avenue, there's trucks now in the middle of Congress Avenue, or not middle, but on, on the right-hand side, blocking a full lane. I, I mean, every day, I, I just don't understand. There are, it didn't used to happen like that. These onloads, offloads used to go into the drive of the, the businesses. Much easier not to have to do that and back the truck out, so they don't. So they're stopping on our streets. We need to be better about ticketing. And I agree with, uh, Commissioner Frankel, um, these need to be ticketed because if, the, the more we allow something to happen, it just gets completely out of control and you try to get that horse back in the barn, good luck. It just doesn't happen. Case in point, how many times have we've talked about all the, the big, uh, 18-wheelers that are parking all down through? 10th Avenue, in alleyways, on, you know, on our parking spaces, taking up three, you know, lengths. This is where our future, um, housing development is going to be going in. Good luck in trying to control it then. It needs to be taken care of now. That is not parking for, uh, uh, you know, these, these, um, big rig trucks. And I think that because of the fact that we haven't been really pushing hard on it, everybody has felt like it's open season, this is the place to park, you know, your big rig truck. So that's why we've got them happening here, because take a drive to the south, you're not going to find them anywhere on those streets. Valets, um, off the main, onto side roads. I know we've talked about this ad nauseam. It was a huge pushback. I'm still willing to try that. I think it's important because it fl, uh, opens up that flow. You know, if it, if it's a real disaster, we can always go backwards. That's the thing that we have to remember. This isn't the end of everything if we don't, if we try it. So I would like to see that, um, tried. I also feel like the same thing with the parking lot, the railroad parking lot. It's a very busy, very important parking lot. We should be getting something from that. And limiting the traffic flow through, uh, Atlantic Avenue, really big pushback on some, but I'll tell you, we have such limited pedestrian area. And that has to do with some of the restaurants taking up some of those areas, which we want because it's, it's outdoor dining, which is great. My thoughts were that we take a very small section and we try to take away the parking in that section possibly, or maybe on just one side of the road. And we expand and see how it works. If it doesn't work, don't do it. But I think that just taking a small step in a different direction, but, and I'm not talking about closing down the park, the drive, driving, because that's something that I really do believe is the, one of the keys to why our downtown is so successful. People, like Mr. Gibbs said, not only want to be seen, they also like looking. So it is a drag, it is a show. It's a, I remember when I was a kid, I'd go up on Lake Worth Beach and we'd be circling around and circling around and everybody's looking at who's there and that's what this is all about. So if we lose that, we lose the juice that really is part of this successful, uh, deal going on. To gain more space, to gain more pedestrian space, we could give it a road diet. We could have just one lane going towards the east and everybody else coming back around. It's a potential, you know? I mean, these are things that we haven't explored, but it's something that we could talk about. That would, of course, really increase a lot of area, um, to be able to do something like that. But again, I don't want to lose that drive-through. And I also know that, uh, that there, it's, it's important for us to have, um, that. But again, I don't wanna lose that drive-through, and I also know that it's important for us to have that see and be seen action going on. So I think that was it. Those are the things that I had just kind of pointed out. And anything we do, I say we do just temporarily, on a short-term basis, in order to be able to test it out. And then, if it doesn't work, we, easy to go backwards. Anyway, those would be my points. Anything else? I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so moving on to the presentation of Swinton and Atlantic intersection, this would be Missy.
This is not the right presentation. It's the one that you downloaded from our office, the Saki, the big one. The one that you worked with Isaac to get. The Uniform Traffic. No, sir.
It's the one right there in the middle, the orange.
It's the one in the middle, 7D. There you go. Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. Missy Barletto, Public Works Director. And now that we've had a big overview about parking and curbside management, we're gonna look very specifically at the intersection of Swinton and Atlantic to kind of hone down and bring you a more technical presentation on what we can do there to help start to eliminate some of the traffic congestion. Most of you have seen this presentation before, but we're gonna bring it back to you again tonight to remind you where we were with this. Unlike the parking and curbside management, where most of the data was gathered during the COVID event, this happened pre-COVID. All of this data was pre-COVID, and the return to Delray Beach this season just lets us know that we were pretty much on the right track. So rather than listening to me talk again, I brought you two brilliant traffic managers from our consultant pool. I have with us Vikas Jain, who is with TYLIN International, who's gonna do the main portion of the presentation, and Natalia Licari, who's with McMahon and Associates, who's gonna talk with you about some of the traffic management and how we came to these conclusions. And I apologize in advance, it's a long presentation, and there's a lot of detail and data involved. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Vikas.
Thank you, Missy. For the record, Vikas Jain with TYLIN International. As Missy said, I'll be tag teaming with Natalia, who's the lead traffic engineer on this project. We'll be sharing quite a bit of technical information with you this evening. I'll provide a quick project background, touch on initial alternatives that were considered as part of the planning process for the study, walk you through concept plans for the preferred alternative, and then talk a little bit about traffic impacts before we close out with next steps. So the city has conducted several studies for many, many years at the intersection and in this corridor with the focus of diverting traffic from Atlantic Avenue onto the parallel facilities, improve bike-bed safety as well as place-making. In addition, on the slide, I'd like to point out some of the other planning efforts. Some of them, you heard about this a little bit ago, which are synergistic with the proposed improvements that I'll be sharing with. So my team used a data-driven approach to identify problems, issues in the corridor, as well as develop solutions. We looked at crash data, you can see some of it on the slide here, collected traffic counts pre-pandemic, also looked at bike-bed counts and survey data, again, to define problems and identify appropriate solutions through, in the corridor and at the intersection. So right at the outset, these are the project goals that we were charged with. This is what we use to develop the alternatives, as well as evaluate them, kind of purpose and need for the project. First off, again, diverting traffic from Atlantic Avenue onto the parallel streets, and this, I'm talking about through traffic, that is not destined to go through the entertainment district. Improve bike-bed safety at the intersection, as well as evaluate feasibility of a mid-block crossing on Swinton north of Atlantic at Old School Square. So as I stated earlier, we use technical analysis and input from key stakeholders as part of the planning process that started back in April. We suspended or put on hold right around when COVID hit this project, but by then we had completed a bulk of the analysis. Excuse me. I'm moving in the other direction. Oh, there we go. Sorry about that. So we developed six alternatives. These are initial alternatives to address safety and mobility issues in the corridor. The first four alternatives, as you can see on the slide, include a roundabout and raised intersection, or some combination of both. You'll also notice that the median is a little bit wider compared to alternatives five and six. When you do that, it comes at an expense of some capacity, through capacity, in this two-block area. As far as alternatives five and six are concerned, we are looking at table intersection or raised intersections. Alternative five has two of them, at Swinton and First. Alternative six has three raised intersections throughout the corridor. And I'll talk a little more about alternative six on the next few slides. As shown on this slide, we conducted about a dozen internal stakeholder meetings, got input from everybody, and that is what we use to analyze, in addition to technical data, to weed out alternatives and arrive at a preferred alternative. So based on all this analysis and input we received, alternative six was the preferred alternative. This is the alternative that has raised intersections at Swinton, First, and Second. So I'll describe the improvements for the preferred alternative, and I'll start at Swinton and Atlantic and move west through the corridor. So first off, at Swinton and Atlantic, there would be a raised intersection. We would make turning radii tighter by bumping out or bulping out the sidewalks in the, as you can see, on the southwest and northwest corners. This would help slow down traffic a little bit, as well as reduce pedestrian crossing distance across Atlantic at that location, as well as across Swinton on the south leg. Eastbound and westbound right-turn lanes would be eliminated at the intersection. This would also, from traffic operations standpoint, right-turn eastbound to southbound turns at the intersection would be prohibited. In addition, at the intersection, we are able to provide a protected phase, which basically means a dedicated green arrow for motorists that are heading south on Swinton and going left or going eastbound. Right now, that's a permissive movement. What that means is, you get a green ball, and then you have to wait for gaps in the traffic, oncoming traffic, to make that turn. So that improves that movement and protects it. And finally, at that intersection, the span wire traffic signal would be replaced with a mastron, and that would, the design would be consistent with what's in that general area. At First Avenue, we not only raised the intersection, but we introduced a directional median, and that's for access management. And what that does is, once you put that directional median, it prevents, prohibits northbound and southbound left-turn lanes on First. Again, that reduces vehicular conflicts and also helps with traffic circulation. And Natalia will talk about that in detail when she gets through traffic analysis. At Second Avenue, the raised intersection, again, helps kind of slow traffic as it moves through the corridor with vertical deflection. And in addition to that, if you look at Second Avenue, we are increasing the length of the left-turn pocket, and that is because it has to accommodate increased demand because of displaced left turns from First Avenue. So that's really... And finally, in addition to all the physical improvements that I just walked you through, there would be some signage that would encourage motorists to use the downtown bypass, which would, at this point, be at Second or First, as opposed to going all the way to Swinton. On this slide, we are showing a mid-block raised crosswalk with the RRFB, which stands for Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon. And that helps, again, provides that mid-block crossing at Old School Square. So that is something that can be engineered and constructed there. So with that, I'll turn it over to Natalia to talk about traffic circulation and traffic impacts. This one.
I wonder if we can run the simulation through here, though? Good evening, Natalia Licari with McMahon Associates. So as Vikas mentioned, with these improvements that we're making at Swinton and Atlantic, First and Second, the idea was to try to take that and try to actually simulate it with actual data and see what it would look like. So the first thing we did back in April of 2019 was to try to assess when the worst traffic conditions were here, since it's very weekend-oriented, but there's a lot of weekday traffic. So the first thing we did was collect 24-hour counts for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to identify what the worst days were. And the worst day was actually a Friday, followed by a Saturday. So then, what we did in May was, we actually did turning movement counts at the very main intersection of Atlantic and Swinton from Friday at 3:00 to Saturday at 9:00, to determine what the sweet spot was where there was a lot of traffic, but there was also a lot of pedestrians. And that time ended up being a Friday between 5:45 and 6:45. There are times when pedestrians are heavier, there are times when traffic is heavier, but that's the time when you had a lot of pedestrians and a lot of traffic. People coming home on a Friday evening, coupled with people already going to the downtown. So what we did was, we tried to get a base here. So we had the existing counts that we collected at Atlantic and Swinton, and some of the intersections immediately around it, First and Atlantic, Second and Atlantic, and also to the east and along First. So we collected the existing counts, and those were in May. And the idea was to establish the existing conditions for peak season. So there's always factoring that goes on to try to simulate your January-through-March conditions. So we did that. Then we looked to the future. So what's the future gonna look like with all these approved developments? Sunday Village was one of them, Atlantic Crossing was another one, those are some of the major ones. Then there was peppered throughout the downtown, probably another six or seven or so that were in the Palm Beach County database. They keep a record of all the developments. So the idea was to look at the future, which was 2025, with all these developments, without any of the changes that we're proposing. And then with the changes that we're proposing, to kind of see what the difference was. And Vikas went over those changes, so I'm not gonna get into those. And I'm gonna show you some simulations now, but in the end, the result was, in the future, with these improvements, traffic just moves a lot better than without these improvements, just because we're kind of removing some of that congestion around that main intersection. So this is what, I don't know if I can actually run the simulation from here.
Let's try it with this.
Let me see. It's the button there. There it is. So this one is existing conditions, and we've zoomed into the intersection here of Atlantic and Swinton. And for this effort, we're gonna just focus on just two movements at the moment, the eastbound left-turn movement and the southbound left-turn movement. As Vikas mentioned before, the southbound left turn is one of the movements that you have to wait for opposing traffic to stop before you can make the turn. So let me run it. So as you can see, you'll see in the eastbound, cars queue, and some of them make the left on the arrow, and then, as they wait for opposing traffic, some may be able to continue to turn, and they stack past First Avenue today, and even beyond, depending on the time. See how they clear? Some of them go through the intersection, but some don't get through, and that's typical of what you see today, and so forth. You know, so some will clear and some won't. And if you look at the north and southbound now, it's a little hard to see the green signals here, but most of the cars that turn southbound, that wanna go east, do so on the yellow and red at the end, because they don't get a gap in the opposing traffic that's going northbound, because it's only a one-lane road, and there's constant traffic. So that's kind of what you see at this intersection with those two movements specifically today. That's not it. So 2025 no build. So this is what happens with all the same geometry that's there today, but with all the improvements. Now, we're gonna see a zoomed-in version, then we're gonna see a zoomed-out version. So this is all the approved developments, and none of the changes that Vikas mentioned. So you'll see that the eastbound queues start to queue significantly past First and even past Second. You'll see the through-traffic queuing, we'll look at the side street in a moment, but the southbound left, what happens now with all the additional traffic that's gonna come, they stack, and then they go beyond the left turn. So now, not only can they not get through, but they're blocking all the southbound traffic on Swinton Avenue also, just because of the, so much demand in the future with all these approved developments. So this is looking at it from the, kind of like a macro level, with Sunday Village being right over here, and it's a major generator right at the intersection. What happens without the recommendations that we're proposing is, it causes gridlock. One of the main improvements is what Vikas mentioned here at the intersection of Atlantic and First, where we're prohibiting left turns. You're putting a directional median so that you can't make a northbound left. In this scenario, you can still make a northbound left, and as you can see what happens, they can't make the left, because they don't get a gap. So they start queuing down on First, onto First, and it kind of has a ripple effect at this intersection. Anyone coming southbound, it just creates a gridlock, they can't turn onto First. Anyone coming northbound, can't turn onto First. So it just creates this sort of ripple effect with people trying to make the left at this intersection, and they can't. So it just, as you can see, there's just, the eastbound, westbound is just gridlock on Atlantic Avenue. So now, with the recommendations that are proposed, and I'll get into some of the detail, I'll run the simulation, and then I just wanna mention a couple of things. The eastbound left, similar to today, it's not gonna go all the way past Second Avenue, it will still go probably past First. I mean, this isn't a miracle, so there still will be some congestion, but it'll be a lot better than if the improvements weren't made. And for the southbound, one of the major improvements, as Vikas mentioned, is that arrow. So now, the left turns, even though there might be only a few vehicles get through, because more time is given to Atlantic Avenue, because it's the more major movement, you still see that those vehicles can actually make the turn now, and they're not going to stack beyond that left-turn lane and block through traffic. So again, it's not going to be no congestion, but in just comparison, the southbound left-turn arrow at this intersection, at Atlantic and Swinton, makes a huge difference for people coming southbound. The prohibiting the left turns at this intersection makes a huge difference, because you don't have that gridlock effect. So what they do instead, this is just kind of, I'll just play this one, you just see reduced congestion, it certainly doesn't go away, but you no longer have this gridlock here, because you can't make the left. So all this gridlock is no longer there. You're still gonna have westbound queues, you're still gonna have eastbound queues, and probably more than we see today, because those are two very big projects that are right here. But the difference is, it's a much greater improvement over if these improvements were not made. I wanna go back, when I talk about a couple more things, I wanna go back to that slide that Vikas had, just so I can point a few things out. This one. So we were talking about the eastbound left, which, again, the congestion is reduced with some of these improvements, just because of the optimized signal, there are just improvements at the signal of Atlantic and Swinton. The southbound left is greatly, the delay is greatly reduced because of the arrow. So some of the concerns that there might be, and just to address that, I just wanna make sure we're clear. The eastbound right-turn movement, we're not just removing the lane, we're removing the queues, and we're prohibiting the right turn, so you can't make it there, and that's where some of that wayfinding is gonna come in. So the idea is to, before someone enters the downtown, instead of bypassing it at Swinton like they do today, they would bypass it a couple blocks earlier. So instead of, you know, you've probably got 500 more cars, that instead of being here, they're going to trip, you know, they're gonna peel off either at Second, we assume that most of the traffic would peel off at Second, because the closer you get to Swinton, the more congested it'll be. So we assume that most people... So we assumed that most people would peel off at Second and use First to cross over Swinton, and some portion would still use First. So that was one thing I wanted to point out. The other is the westbound right turn. You'll notice that the westbound right turn lane at Atlantic and First has been removed to provide a wider sidewalk for pedestrians. That movement was a very low-volume movement, there was 27 vehicles in the peak hour, so it really had no effect on the traffic operations to remove that lane. The north and southbound left turns prohibited at Atlantic and First, again, I think that's a huge improvement. And Vikas mentioned, so what happens when they can't make a left on First, they're going to come down to First Street, go over to Second Avenue, and come up Second Avenue and make a left. And that's why we've had to extend that left turn lane a little bit to accommodate the additional queues that are expected at Second Avenue because of that diversion. Eastbound through vehicles will still be here at Second, so instead of people going through, some of them will just be making a right turn to divert. And that's really it. So I just wanted to point out that we're not just removing the lane, we're also attempting to divert it through this wayfinding and the other wayfinding, that's also been discussed.
Let me ask you a question real quick. The eastbound right-hand lane at the corner of Swinton and Atlantic, you're saying you cannot make a right turn?
We will not. It'll be prohibited in the future.
Okay, because that's going to create huge backup, and because, look at First, having to make a right-hand turn lane. So now, you're pushing anything that's coming down First to Atlantic, okay, to that same area that you can't make a right-hand turn lane. So I think that you're, I think that's going to be a complication. I mean, I don't know, I'm just saying that I feel like that alleviator right there is important, because otherwise, what you're doing is you're forcing more traffic to have to go down Atlantic Avenue. If they don't get in that left-hand lane and get out of there, they're stuck. They're stuck for now, how many, you know, I mean, you're stuck going down that really, really tight area of Atlantic.
So what we're diverting, what we're moving away is, so people that make the right turn today here, the people that make the eastbound right turn, they either go down and make a left at First to just bypass the downtown, or they go through. So the idea of the wayfinding is to not let them get all the way here to Swinton and Atlantic, and just make them make a right at Second and cross over at First. So when they get to, so when you come down at Second, you're going to come down here and you'll go over on First. At that point, you'll either go through if you're bypassing the downtown, or you're going to make a right. So they just remove that congestion from that area.
I understand. I'm just saying that because of the fact that you have a loop here, I don't think, I think that, you know, unless somebody is in this area and understands it and knows it, they're going to end up having a situation where coming up First, because they didn't realize they could only make a right-hand turn now, they can't make a left-hand turn. So you're going to get them having to almost like go back into the...
Oh, you're saying at First Avenue, because they can't make a left?
Yes. You're asking for them to go into and make that a traffic deal too, and I don't know how to deal with that, but what I'm trying to say is, it feels like you're actually directing more traffic into an area that you don't want it, and without having the pressure cooker to get out. It's very difficult to get out, they'd have to get onto Atlantic, get on the left-hand side, and go around that way, and I understand it, because I live here, but who else would? So that's the only thing that I'm looking at here that looks funky to me. Anyway.
I think there would be, you know, signage on First and on both First Av, as well as on Second, to direct motorists to kind of alert them of what the condition would be. And I think wayfinding and signage has to be, would be a key, key element of this, otherwise what you're saying will definitely happen.
You see some of those signs where you're coming into the downtowns, like they say to go, you know, to get to I-95, turn left here, so it would, it would have to be before they get there. The expectation is not that they're going to make a right there to then try to make a U-turn at Atlantic and Swinton, because that would not be a good situation. We certainly are planning for a better wayfinding, so that hopefully it does not happen. And so the other reason for removing the westbound right turn at that intersection, which is what Vikas mentioned, the purpose of it is to tighten this intersection, make it safer. A lot of pedestrians cross on the south leg, and now, all the conflicts would be removed there, because you can't make a westbound left, and now you can't make an eastbound right. So there's a lot of pedestrians that cross there, and they cross where their cars turn. We did a lot of field observations, and cars just don't wait. They just run you over, or some don't, but, so the idea is to tighten that up and try to remove those conflicts where we can at this intersection.
Understood, and I know that that has been an issue, but I, you know, I just, I'm concerned about how we're making that even tougher for the cars to get through, and that's going to be even bigger, because what'll happen is, is if you, that stacking distance between Swinton and First is not that great. So, you know, if we're, if we're taking a bunch of traffic and wanting to stack them up here, because they really have no other place to go but to funnel down Atlantic, and Atlantic is backed up, you know, with everything that happens, because it happens every single day.
Sure.
Now, you're talking about you're stacking up even further back, and that's concerning to me, because we're now creating a bigger issue than what we have currently. And part of that is the pressure reliever of having that right-hand turn. I understand what you're saying, you don't want to have that, but in the absence of it, without really understanding and even wayfinding, listen, we have wayfinding that says you can't make a left at that light heading westbound. It happens all the time. We have, we have, we have finding that says, "Do not block the square." We do it every single day. I mean, you can't cross over Swinton a lot of times, I mean, I'm sorry, Atlantic, from Swinton, either way, because people are decided, "Well, you know what, I'm more important than the traffic, like I'm going to block it." So those things, although they're great, they don't always work. And so that's my biggest concern, is that little section. Vice Mayor, you had a question?
Yes, I was going to say, nobody really reads the wayfinding signs. If you're new to the city, you're just trying to keep your eyes on the road, try to not hit a bicyclist or an errant pedestrian who decides they are going to cross whether there's a passageway or not. So I would definitely not be in favor of no right turn under Swinton.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
I mean, we saw it in the simulation, I mean, the, you know, all the advantages of this program. So I'm so glad, because I was excited about this program years ago, and then I wasn't really sure what happened to it, and I'm so glad to see that there's been so much movement on it, and to see the data, and to see the improvements won in traffic. We are going to see an increase in cars. That's a fact. There's nothing I can do about it, there's nothing we can do about it, we're going to see an increase in cars. So in our last presentation, I saw a line that says, "What makes cities smart?" This is what makes cities smart. Implementing programs like this, this makes cities smart. It makes it safer for pedestrians, and it also waters down the bottleneck. I mean, we have an extreme bottleneck right there at Swinton and Atlantic. It's dangerous if you're in a car, it's dangerous if you're out of a car. And also, there's just a visual divide there, where we could water that and spread that over three blocks, and it could really help the three blocks, or the two to three blocks that are west of Swinton, start to feel like more of a transitional space. So I'm very much in favor, I would be excited to see something. Maybe there's some tweaking, maybe there's some, you know, different analysis that you have to look into to address, you know, some of the mayor's concerns, or any of our concerns, but I think it's absolutely necessary to move forward on this, especially before some of these other projects come online.
Well, it's also going to need to, I mean, there is no way that we can move forward on this with having all of those valet stands. I'm just telling you. I mean, it's just, it works hand in hand. You've got to have the flow, because if you don't have the flow going down Atlantic, we're going to be backing it up to probably the fifth.
I didn't want to mention it before, because I didn't want to get too much in the weeds, Mayor, but when you mentioned taking some of our parking on Atlantic, and, or the valet areas on Atlantic, and turning it into pedestrian, I mean, you look at what they did at Clematis, it was a huge success. They started with one block as a test. And now, I think they've expanded it to four or five blocks. That block, that first block of east of Swinton is perfect. It's already done on one side for us. Old School Square's already done that. It's eight spaces. All it is, is eight spaces. It would be a perfect test block.
I agree.
And would transition very nicely with this plan here.
And we could try it.
I agree.
We could try it.
I completely agree.
If I can just throw out, one of the main problems with bottlenecking isn't valets. It's when someone between Swinton and Federal Highway wants to make a left-hand turn, and they can't, because people are walking across the street. Now, this was brought up 2010, 2011, and we debated it, and the merchants didn't want it. But if you want to talk about bottlenecking, left-hand turns on Atlantic Avenue between Swinton and Federal, that causes, at least between the trucks and the left-hand turns, that causes the biggest backup, from what I see, and I'm only downtown every day, so I'm not down there as much as other people, but maybe something to look at.
Commissioner Cassell?
I was going to say, I, you know, listen, I know exactly what Commissioner, I'm sorry, Deputy Vice Mayor Frankel was saying, and I agree, but it is also complicated by people who basically have decided that they're going to get into that valet stand, and they stop.
People make U-turns on Atlantic Avenue when they're not supposed to. I mean, there's all kinds of stuff going on.
Right, right. You know, so we've got a lot of things going on, you're right. Anyway, very good. I don't know if there's anything else that you need from us, it was just a presentation, correct?
He hasn't, we're not...
Oh, you're still going?
Just two more slides. Yeah, this is more, I think...
I just went back to that one to show...
Yeah, just, you know, to your point, to move this forward, from implementation's standpoint, we think that this can be implemented within the next five years, if all these, all the agencies and all the coordination can happen and the concepts can be refined. We don't believe that you would need to do a lane elimination study or lane repurposing study, because we are not eliminating through lanes or anything like that. So this is very, very doable in the short term.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
All right, very good. Well, I don't think that Atlantic is, I mean, between Swinton and, we own that, Swinton and Federal, I believe.
But this component is...
Oh, 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 yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, so moving on to the update on the citywide bicycle pedestrian plan.
Okay, this is short, I promise. We have yet another mobility effort underway, Anthea, J. Development Services Director, and it is our bicycle pedestrian master plan, which has kicked off. The TYLIS is actually also our consultant on this one, assisting staff. Stakeholder interviews are underway. There are two open houses planned, one on the 24th and one on the 31st. You'll start to see notices coming out for that, you know, pushes to have that. The public information plan also asks for a focus group, and this is one commission-appointed member to serve with some level of continuity through the public outreach efforts throughout the plan. This is a citywide effort, so it would be, I think, beneficial to have those representatives geographically dispersed throughout the city. And so honestly, we're just here tonight to find some people who'd be willing to participate to help guide this. It's not a heavy lift, this isn't the plan all over again. It's, right now, the plan calls for three meetings throughout the, you know, throughout the process to fight that continuity, and that's really what we're looking for. This is project timeline, and we're just here to see who we should reach out to, to help us.
Okay, and so, do you want each one of us to select somebody from, you know, like, for instance, we're all, I think we discussed this during the agenda review, we're all, it's interesting, we're all in separate areas of the city.
Right.
I'm west, but I'm southwest, you're west, but you're northwest, you're in the central, you've got the northeast, and you've got the, kind of, the southeast. So it's kind of interesting that we're all separated out almost in districts. Did you want us to try to get somebody within those areas in order to be able to serve?
Right, I think it would be, like I said, it's citywide, so, you know, we have to make sure we have Western representation and the different quadrants of the city as well. That would be the most useful, so that there's always sort of an expert to fall back on, help us encourage people to participate, but also have a perspective from different places.
Okay, great. So we should start hunting, or are you going to put something out to? It's curious.
How do we, how do you want us to...
I had to reach out to staff, I thought we were bringing a name tonight, so I...
Oh, did you? That was the goal, to have a name tonight. If you don't have a name, I'm okay with you privately emailing Anthea your pick, and you can do it that way.
Yeah, I was going to say, do you want us to just email, name, phone number, and email?
However you prefer, and then we will add them to our contact list.
I'm just going to publicly state mine, because I'm excited about it, Albert Ridgewagen. He lives in my community, so, you know, checks that box.
Perfect, and he also sells bikes.
And he sells bikes, but he's also, because of you, the mayor, he's on the vice chair of the TPA Citizen Advisory Committee.
Yep, he's got a lot of experience.
He's got plenty of experience, yeah.
Perfect, that's a great fit. And that's an easy lift, three meetings.
I have no clue. I have to get a clue, but I won't.
All right, we'll get them to you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, moving on, we don't have any public hearings or second readings today, but we do have an ordinance for our first readings, which is ordinance 08-22.
08 or 0...
I'm reading it off the...
Oh, I apologize. 0822. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations of the City of Delray Beach Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 4 zoning regulations, Article 4.3 district regulations, general provisions, Section 4.3.3 special requirements for specific uses, subsection V, uses involving alcoholic beverages, to allow outdoor consumption of alcohol at standalone bars and providing specific regulations for outdoor use areas, and amending Article 4.6 supplemental district regulations, Section 4.6.6, commercial and industrial uses to operate within a building, subsection B allowable outside usage to add outdoor use at standalone bars as a conditional use, providing a conflicts clause, providing a severability clause, authority to codify, and providing an effective date. This is, we promised, the last one before our change, where we require a sponsorship. So I believe Ms. Kaiser is here, she is going to be giving you a presentation, there is a 20-minute time limit.
Your presentation on first reading?
No, because previously we did, this was for our change.
We keep having those last ones.
This is what I'm told.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you for this last opportunity, sir presents you on first reading. I'm Andrea Kaiser with Kaiser Legal on behalf of the applicant, 55 Southeast Second Avenue, Delray Beach, Florida, 33444. So I've introduced this applicant to you plenty, so I won't do that again, but I did want to take this opportunity to provide to you the catalyst for tonight's proposed text amendment. This particular applicant needed an opportunity to distinguish himself from other bars and not be pigeonholed into the same stereotypical bar. So tonight's proposal establishes a process whereby he has that opportunity to distinguish himself, and there are reasons, he is an example of why this process is warranted and why the conditional use is warranted. So if you take a look at that collage that I gave you there on your screen, you'll see that the applicant's desired outdoor use is for more than just drinking. They have Run Club and 5Ks that they host out there, workouts with Orange Theory and Yoga Dancing Alliance Studio, they have a cornhole league tournament recently, one for kids that benefited charity, they did Desi's Second Chance Animal Rescue fundraiser out there, and also, they have the opportunities of food truck and other pop-up food vendors that allows us to serve as an outdoor dining area. This particular applicant serves beer and wine only, and the patrons that really visited this establishment, they visit it for a particular purpose, whether it be the Social Craft Beer Club, an event versus your traditional bar hopping in an area where there's a lot of bars. And it's not a very walkable distance to other bars, and it's surprising, the demographic, college students, young college students, ages 20 to, 21 to 25, are actually his second lowest demographic. So it's really catered to a particular audience that has an aficionado, there are aficionados for craft beer and wine. Also, this particular location, located on 440 Northeast Fifth Avenue, near the northwest corner of Lake Idae and South Federal Highway, it's located in an area where most other businesses close while he's operating during his peak hours. And in this particular location, this is a snapshot of your zoning map, the railroad acts as a buffer on the west, and really, the property is surrounded primarily by commercial businesses, and is a distance from any residentially zoned properties. So the uses in this area are primarily automotive retail and neighborhood retail, and although this applicant has a conditional use application submitted, it's not before you tonight. For your consideration, tonight is just the creation of a conditional use category that would give this applicant an opportunity to apply for the outdoor use area, which we believe is warranted by the examples that I've given you early, previously. Another reason why we think this process is warranted is because the current regulations regarding outdoor consumption of alcohol at standalone bars, we believe are antiquated. Currently, the first reason why we think it's antiquated... Currently, the first reason why we think it's antiquated is currently, outdoor use is allowed as a temporary use. And that's because you, our city leaders, recognize that the health and safety of our residents was too important, and our small businesses were suffering by not being able to provide the social distancing and the freedom from enclosed spaces during the COVID-19 pandemic. So now that we've provided this temporary use, our patrons love it, and they're demanding it. So we believe that reversing it and taking that away from them is actually gonna hurt businesses. And as, um, Laura from the DDA provided to you earlier in her comments today, it appears 96% of businesses have an outdoor use areas. So another reason why this regulation is antiquated is because it's providing competitive disadvantages for a small number of businesses. So this is just even more of a reason why this process is a good opportunity for, to address it at this time. And then finally, we have the privilege of having beautiful weather. It's one of the many reasons why residents and guests in the city enjoy and demand outdoor activities. And for those of you that did attend the Delray Beach Fashion Show, I think that's a great reminder of it. I mean, Old School Square was beautiful, the event was set up beautifully, and we had perfect weather, and I really think the ability to enjoy that outdoors really makes that night really magical and special. And then when we were at the Delray Beach, Meso Beach luncheon, they had an indoor, outdoor space that was integrated, that flowed between the two areas, and it gave you an opportunity to enjoy both, and it really created an amazing vibe. So we want to give that same opportunity to these business owners that are subject to this antiquated current regulation. So we asked ourselves, how do we get the opportunity to differentiate ourselves while also acknowledging that the city has a duty to protect adjacent communities where bars are located? And we, what we did was, is we proposed a conditional use category that's available to all business owners who meet eligibility criteria, and then give the city the power, um, to approve these conditional use applications on a case-by-case basis. So this way, you can really evaluate and identify whether or not each location, it would be appropriate to have an outdoor use area. So per your direction, on June 1st, 2021, we collaborated with staff to establish a more comprehensive set of regulations should, um, outdoor consumption of alcohol be approved. And these more comprehensive regulations include protections that are not currently existing in our code. So first and foremost, the applicability and the eligibility requirement. It would only apply to, as a starting point, it would only apply to standalone bars serving beer and wine only, and we can also add, um, to those serving food as well, if desired. Um, the requirements would be that the accessory, the outdoor use area would be an accessory use with permanent seating, there would be, need to be an agency license required for outdoor consumption, there would need to be additional parking for that outdoor area, there would need to be formal site plan requirements submitted to the city for evaluation and review, permanent seating, screening and barriers, maintenance and aesthetic equipment, so it continues to look nice and maintained outside. Restrictions, we, uh, we provided a provision for a distance limitation to residentially zoned districts, subject to the noise ordinance, and the hour, outdoor hours would be limited to the indoor use hours. Um, there are a lot of benefits to this that I think I don't necessarily need to go through, um, but have been mentioned throughout the presentation. And just want to conclude, our justification does provide a rationale for consistency with the city's comprehensive plan, but I just want to emphasize the economic prosperity omen of objective ECP 2.1, where it says the city's objective should be to support the efforts to strengthen small businesses and provide them more resources and services. And in conjunction with policy ECP 559, expand that support for businesses who are located off Atlantic Avenue. So here, we're helping small business maximize operating efficiency while maintaining the health and safety, while meeting consumer demands, while still having an avenue to protect adjacent communities. So for all these reasons, I strongly, um, I strongly urge you to support creating a conditional use category just to give these businesses an opportunity to apply for an outdoor space. And with that, if you have any questions, um, myself and the applicant are available.
Thank you. Mayor. And I know, I know you all know this, but just, just so that the record's very clear, um, number one, we're not approving a conditional use this evening. She does have a client, and that's not what we're doing today. But the text amendment that's being proposed would apply to anybody, and it would allow anybody to make a conditional use application. So while Ms. Kaiser does have a client, and you could see the pictures at the beginning, this would be available to anybody who wanted to make this application to you. So I just want to make that, because I, I want the record to be clear, while this is privately initiated, we're bringing it to you because the applicant has that right, but this is something that's going to go into the LDRs, and would be available to anybody who, who wanted to make the application to the city. Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Right. Okay. Um, I really do think this is the last one, that's predating sponsorship. So, thank you. Okay, so, really quickly, Opportunities taproom is the applicant, and Ms. Kaiser, of course, is representing them. This is, as, as the city attorney stated, an amendment to the LDRs, this is not a conditional use for the specific location at this time. In order to allow this to continue past the temporary measures that we've adopted for COVID, um, a change to the LDRs is required. Otherwise, um, when those provisions sunset, um, I believe in May, um, then the outdoor use areas need to go away if the provision is not extended. So currently, right now, the, uh, the text amendment proposes to open this ability to, um, businesses, to standalone bars, not businesses, let me be clear, because there are businesses that have two COPs to sell beer and wine, you know, um, perhaps for consumption off-premise, but, um, the only standalone bar that is, um, here that has a two COP is currently Opportunities. We have had in the past more, um, Wine Bar and some others that had two COPs focused solely on beer and wine, no hard liquor, which is what requires a four COP. So, um, the draft before you only, um, would currently affect one existing bar, but it is a citywide amendment, and therefore, it would apply to future businesses that may want to come in, you know, anywhere in the city. The proposed amendments, um, you know, uh, would allow those businesses serving only beer and wine to, um, apply for a conditional use. Conditional uses go through the Planning and Zoning Board for recommendation, and then this board ultimately makes findings related to impact to surrounding, um, neighbors. Um, the code amendment, um, requires that you have to park the outside area, the same as you would park the inside area, this is the same rule we have for restaurants, um, that it has to be accessory to the indoor area, which means you can't have, you know, a 100-square-foot indoor area and a 1,000-square-foot outdoor area. Accessory means that it is diminutive in their, you know, there's a size requirement. The proposal is to ensure separation from residentially zoned districts, just to be really clear, that doesn't mean residential units in the mixed-use zoning areas, it means you're in a residential neighborhood, and so it is a 300-foot, um, separation to the outdoor use area, not from the property line, but to where the use is located on the site. It would need to be demonstrated on a site plan, go-to-sprab. The permanent tables and chairs means that you're showing us the arrangement, that they are screened and defined by barriers in that area, and it does include prohibitions on some noise makers like amplified music, and it would follow the same hours as the indoor use area. So in our city, that means indoor uses can be open, um, until midnight, um, and so this would mean the outdoor areas could be open to midnight, but they would be subject to the noise ordinance in terms of, um, noise, um, traveling more than 100 feet from the property. So the current code allows outdoor use areas with restaurants, bona fide restaurants, meaning you're serving full meals, the kitchen's always open, yes, we all know people who go to restaurants and only have a drink every now and again, um, but the opportunity to have a full-service meal served at every table has to be available. This would change that so that two COP standalone bars, meaning beer and wine bars, would be able to offer outdoor seating as well. This, um, we actually have separation requirements between standalone bars, um, just as, whether they're inside now, um, but they are not, um, allowed to bunch up, so we keep a map of this. So this is, um, that map of the existing licensed bars, and then there is a 300-foot buffer drawn around each of them, um, just to show you, you know, how isolated they are. Now, this is the only one that is a two COP, the rest of them have liquor licenses. So the staff report that's attached from Planning and Zoning Board provides, you know, a full analysis of the comp plan and the goals, objectives, and policies, um, and in terms of updating the LDRs, um, outdoor spaces have become more desirable for both business owners and patrons. Um, we have a number of other, um, goals, objectives, and policies talking about reinforcing Delray Beach's character, and so ultimately, does this evolution and this use align with that? This has been taken to several advisory boards. Um, the Pineapple Grove Main Street Board, um, gave a mixed recommendation, they acknowledged that, um, it's, it's a benefit to the businesses to provide something that is popular to our visitors, um, but then ultimately, there is a little bit of, um, concern, um, that if it was a use that was expanded too much, it could sort of result in something that's out of character with the city. The Downtown Development Authority also reviewed this, um, and both letters should be attached to the, um, agenda. They advocated that, um, the required distance separation of 300 feet may not be necessary, um, and that all businesses serving alcohol regardless of their liquor license, um, level should be allowed to participate in this over time. Um, the Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this on January 24th, um, they voted four to one to recommend denial, um, and they raised the following concerns. Again, the potential proximity to residential neighborhoods, um, and those impacts, um, you know, just using, measuring from the property line instead of the space, um, or the, yeah, the location of the space on the site, um, and then the fact that this is an LDR amendment, and therefore, it would open this ability across the city, and there's some, has some concern about, um, broadening that then, which, you know, we've already heard that comment, and that we broaden it to include other bars and restaurants like that could just, um, move pretty quickly to, to be something that applies where we weren't expecting it. And then the, the hours that it's open, um, you know, if the bar is open the same hour, if the area's open the same, um, time as the bars, we're talking midnight generally. So those were the concerns raised by Planning and Zoning Board for your consideration, and that's, I'm here if you have any questions, so.
Okay. Do the commission.
I do have a question.
Sure.
The, uh, Saltwater Brewery.
Yes, I knew you were gonna ask me.
Well, they, they have picnic tables, and I may or may not have had a beer outside once or twice.
Yes.
How do they do it?
Um, I actually need to look up the brewery rules. I, I actually was sitting here, and I saw Saltwater, and I was like, I didn't check that, so I'll have to tell you that in a second.
And they always have a food truck, 'cause we did grant that permission.
Yeah.
And when I spoke, just to share with my colleagues, I did speak with Ms. Kaiser earlier, and I thought the setup was good because they had the food truck at the brewery.
Mm-hmm.
People were eating, I, I had pizza when I was there months ago, but, uh, I always thought food was, was very important when it came to these kind of things, but I was just curious, 'cause I know Saltwater's only been doing it for about, you know, nine years.
Nine years.
I think, I think Saltwater is a manufacturing with a tasting room, right?
Right.
I think it's different.
Their loophole is manufacturing facility with tasting room. I think that's how they got the outdoor. And I will say that, you know, a lot of the, the outdoor bars, if they're not bringing in a local, a local food truck or a local chef, um, they, you go there and you order delivery dudes, and you order food from local restaurants, and you sit there. I have said this before from the dais, I think this, um, this is antiquated, is a good word. Anyone that wants to have liquor and, or, or beer or wine and eat at a standalone bar to force them inside a building is, is just antiquated, that's the old way of thinking. I think a step forward would be only with the beer and wine, so we're talking beer gardens, we're talking wine rooms, we're not talking full liquor bars. As you can see, there's only one in our entire city, um, and that one would still have to come before us, and if there was gonna be another one, they'd have to come before us, and they'd have to come before us. So it's not like they're gonna be popping up, and we do have a pretty strict rule on how many standalone bars we can even have in our city. Um, so I am very much, uh, very much in favor of this baby step, um, towards allowing people to enjoy the, the outside and not forcing the standalone bars that want to serve beer and wine to, uh, to put an entire kitchen and take business away from local restaurants.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, I won't be long. When we gave conditional use because of COVID, I just knew that it was gonna not be conditional because of COVID, it's gonna be, we like it, we want it, we demand it. I do not want to open this Pandora's Box. I like the fact that Delray is different and that we are antiquated, I take it as a proud badge. And, um, I agree with the Planning and Zoning Board, the, um, downtown DDA is true to form, they always side with the merchants, good for you. And the mixed use at Pineapple Grove is just that, they're torn, some like it, some don't. I'm going to side with our Planning and Zoning Board, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cassell?
I have mixed emotions on this, I truly do. I, I worry, someone very intelligent said, you know, always make your decisions with the worst actors in mind, and that's concerning, because the worst actors could be problematic. I guess I'm trying to figure out, if you have a food truck parked almost on a permanent basis, does that mean you're serving food?
Oh, um.
I guess I'm trying to figure out, look, I think we all look at this current situation and say, this could be okay for Opportunities to be out, having outdoor use, but if, the fear is, what's the expansion beyond this in the future, when people come to us and they say, well, you're letting them let us, and then, you know, we always worry when we're giving something to one and not, I understand there's only one CO, I think it's a CO2, two CO, but this could pose problems. So then the question is, how do you get around it? If someone has a permanent food truck, are they considered serving food, thereby can use their outside? Are there other ways to look at this?
So the proposed ordinance doesn't require that you serve food, right? We can't. Which you can have. Sure. So, so the current proposed ordinance doesn't require that you serve food, but we would be amenable, because the whole purpose of having the permanent food truck on the property is to make food available, it's complimentary, it's an additional revenue stream and complements the beer and wine. Uh, again, I, I think that we're, we're past the slippery slope, because it's already allowed as a temporary use, and I think that's why it's appropriate to create a conditional use category. We understand that we can come back before you and apply for a conditional use and may not be approved by it, but at least having the opportunity to say, hey, listen, we're different, we think we can still act while still protecting the adjacent communities, can we have an opportunity to come before you and present a reasoning why we think that this would be a good fit for our, um, for this particular location in this particular area? I think just having the opportunity to, to ask for it is, is important for this city. I think, you know, how, um, you know, lumping us all into one, one group, it, it does a disservice to the city. Our city is so unique with different kinds of businesses that do different things, and base, I think it would stifle innovation and innovative businesses from coming forward if they're gonna be lumped into one category. So, again, it's just, we, we may not ever, uh, qualify for this conditional use, but to have the opportunity and for this city to be able to impose conditions on the conditional use, if you were to consider, consider, uh, consider the conditional use, and impose conditions to ensure that there are protections, I think would at least, um, you know, help provide this, you know, business owners like my, like the applicant, um, the opportunity to really have, um, you know, continue to provide a service to its patrons that has really been shown over the last year to be a really good thing in this area, so.
I'm gonna, uh, say something, 'cause, I'm sorry, but I totally disagree with you, we are not past any slippery slope, um, this is why you're here today. Um, this is not, uh, because we granted something during COVID means that we're, we're over the slippery slope and now we must go down that side of the hill. I'm sorry, I disagree with you 100%, I think that's, um, that's how towns, uh, turn, change, become something very different than what we are. And, uh, so I totally disagree with that, and, uh, you know, maybe I will or will not have the support of my colleague. support of my colleagues on that, but that's how I feel. I mean, if that were the case, you wouldn't be here.
I'm sorry, that's not what I intended to say, that's not what I meant. What I meant was that we can avoid the slippery slope by creating a process, which by, you still have the power to evaluate each application and determine whether or not they're good fits for the city.
Right.
So I apologize for the miscommunication.
No problem. Well, you know, I, I have some very big concerns, too. First of all, I, I don't think that anything is antiquated about what we're doing with respect to our drinking outdoors. I think that this town is a town that is, prides itself on, you know, having a great vibe, there's nothing wrong with what's happening in our downtown, we're very, very vibrant, we have people that are coming here all the time, opening up. If we were antiquated, we would be an area that would not attract the number of people that are coming downtown, or the number of businesses that wanna do business downtown. So antiquated is not a word I would ever use to describe anything going on in the downtown area. In fact, what I see is that we're opening up what the Vice Mayor basically stated, is a Pandora's Box to becoming something that we are not, which might be more akin to a, you know, a, well, you know, a, a New Orleans. I mean, that's kind of what comes to mind, people walking around, because here's the deal, it's just, and you said it very good, this is a starting point. You stated that, and you know what, it, it, it hit me, you're exactly right, it is. We're, we're actually at a starting point to doing something very different in our town. Now, that said, I support opportunities doing this, I really do. I wanna find a way to be able to do this without opening up the Pandora's Box in my town, because I think that, like the Commissioner Cassell said, we have to look at this as the worst-case scenario, not the best-case scenario. You guys are probably gonna be one of the best-case scenarios, and also Saltwater. You know, I think that that's great, I, I love that, because it does draw people to our town, and I do wanna do that. However, I think that going down this path is, is too much for me to take, I, I don't wanna go down this path the way that it is. So I'm gonna ask you a question, City Attorney. Okay, so, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna really do something that I don't know, you're not, probably not gonna like me to say or ask about it, but. So we had another business that no longer exists, just went under, that had a sprab, you know, site plan review that allowed for them to be able to do something like this. Why would we not allow them to do the same thing, and that way it's specific to them?
Because it was completely contrary to what the code requires, and, you know, and I'm not disparaging any members of SPRAB, but one of our, our biggest rules is that board members cannot redesign a project on the dais. You take the project as you see it, you approve it, up, you vote it up or down. What happened there is, you know, they got a little excited about the project, they got very loose and started recommending things that, you know, unfortunately, nobody cautioned them against, and it just went through the, the, the process, and Anthea and I were left with something that we didn't even know what to do with. And construction began, they were using the property, and we felt that it wasn't fair for us to interject ourselves and say, timeout, this is completely wrong, this never should have happened. So I, I know which business you're talking about, and that, that you could write a novel of all the mistakes that were made in those approvals, that I can tell you, we work very hard to not put a business in that position, because we would never wanna tell them, you know, you can't open because, you know, what happened wasn't, wasn't legally sound.
So if I can add just a couple more things in, to tag on to that, that this is not a business pretending to be a restaurant, this is a business that is saying they are a taproom, you know, a two COP is a very big distinction between businesses or among businesses. We, of course, made these adjustments to the standalone bars that we have in town for all of them, that had an outdoor area they could use during the COVID impacts. And, you know, honestly, this, this business never received a complaint. I think there was one code enforcement check where we asked them to move the trash can or something, or, or something like that. But there has been no noise complaints, there has been, you know, no issues. And so to your point about how can we facilitate this business, but not other businesses, where it gets away from us, so first off, that is what the conditional use is defined, designed to do, but that is also what the safeguards and the ordinance are supposed to do. So is there something, you know, being adjacent to a rail corridor, which to be fair, both Saltwater and this one are, which is why they are buffered from a neighborhood? Or is there something that we could go back with the ordinance that would make it, make the standards for approval that would apply to everyone somehow?
I think maybe that.
The buffering or something.
And the, and the, and the distance. I, I think that, you know, my biggest concern is that we have somebody that moves into an area that is just outside of the area that is, you know, occupied by a residency or, or even the downtown where there are people that are living, right? Like, we had that situation across Atlantic Avenue. I, I just think that if there's a way to be able to make it so that we know for sure that there's no way that that particular business can, you know, affect the, the quality of life of the residents, I'm all for it.
Right.
But the problem is, is that I just have, I don't wanna end up creating a bigger problem with something that we don't have a problem with right now. That's what I'm trying to say, so.
Some of our more boisterous areas are, are actually restaurants that are, you know, not even bars that are having.
I understand, that is a problem. But the other thing, too, is that, you know, this opens up, let's just say that there's a, you know, a, a wine and, and beer place that opens up downtown, that's along, let's say, 'cause it's underdeveloped, West Atlantic, and now they wanna be outside, and their, their time to be outside is equal to the time of inside, which is two, 2:00 AM. Now all of a sudden, you, you've got a different situation on your hands, if it's, if it's in the entertainment district, I guess you would say, because aren't they allowed to stay open until 2:00?
No, they are, so that's.
It's another condition.
It's a, it's a different.
Okay, all right, no, I don't wanna go into it. I, I'm just trying to say, I don't wanna create something that's bigger than what we already have, and what were you gonna say?
Yeah, Anthea, what about, so this was, this is what was proposed by the applicant.
Right.
So we can't really make a lot of changes to it.
I understand.
You know, we do our best. What if it's conditional in only certain zoning districts? I mean, you could, you could potentially fashion it that way, so then it's not completely citywide, it still comes before you as a conditional use, and you could tailor it so that it's only within certain zoning districts that, you know, is not necessarily the entertainment district or places like that. I can tell you that, you know, given some license, I, I do think a lot of these things do need to be tweaked, and I do think we could fashion it a way to provide you with the assurances that you want, so that we're not, we don't become something we're not, but also, you know, provides an avenue for people to come before you. I, I do think that making it a conditional use, I think almost everything in the city should be a conditional use, but I get it, but I do think making it a conditional use gives you the latitude to look at each property specifically, look at what's before you, and put those conditions to mitigate the impacts that are specific to that property. You know, where this is located, I don't think you're gonna have the same concerns versus, you know, on West Atlantic, you know, near our neighborhood, right? It's gonna be different for you, and, and again, you do have the discretion to deny a conditional use. But if this is something that a majority of you want to, want staff to explore, I think we can work with the applicant to put it so that it's something that's palatable for everybody, you know, obviously, no offense, Ms. Kaiser, but she obviously has a client that needs it a certain way, that's not necessarily your concern. Your concern is making sure that our regulations provide the necessary protections so that anybody coming forward, you know, you don't have to have the sleepless nights over, you know, what's coming before you and, and how you're gonna vote. So I'm happy to work with Anthea and Ms. Kaiser and, and maybe come up with a different proposal for you that, you know, could still get Ms. Kaiser where she wants to go, but gives the commission the assurances to, to be able to not only regulate it, but make sure it's not necessarily citywide.
Gotcha, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I was just wanting to remind if, Anthea wanted to page back through the various bars that have come before us, each one of them have, we had a regulation, you had to serve food. Now we're saying, well, I can't do a kitchen, I'll put a food truck there. Well, what if there's no one to man the food truck? Does that mean that night they can't open? It's just so much, and once again, I've stated my opinions, thank you.
I, 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 thank you, Michelle, I think it is a baby step in the right direction. The conditional use ensures that there isn't a Pandora's Box, we literally have to approve every one, and we could put so many conditions on it to really limit it in our city, so that we don't miss out on great opportunities, like opportunities, or like Saltwater, or like whatever else, some, some wine concept that we don't, we haven't even been invited to. I've done a lot of traveling, I'm sure many of you have, I don't know if you've ever seen a wine, a wine bar or a, a beer garden, you know, out of, you know, out of control. You just don't, you know, that's not something that is, is commonly seen. I certainly wasn't saying our city or our downtown was antiquated, thank you. We obviously do have LDRs that are, Anthea brings them to us all the time so that we can change them and we can update them. I feel like this is one of them. The, if you're having alcohol, you should be in a building, preferably a windowless one, that's an, that's a really, unless you're stepping outside to use the payphone, of course, that is.
Payphone?
Well, well, in our LDRs, in our LDRs, you can actually step right outside, and I'm guessing that's either to smoke a cigarette or use the payphone. You can step right out the front door within like a few feet of, of the outdoor, you just can't sit out there. So I, I don't know, that sounds antiquated to me, but, you know. But I actually have a payphone in my office, so. I, 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 I don't think it's a, I don't think New Orleans has an open container, I mean, you could walk anywhere in that city with full liquor, this isn't that. I, like I said, I think it's a, it's a baby step in the right direction, and if we put enough conditional, you know, limitations on it, it's, it allows us to not, at least not miss out on a really great opportunity for our city. And if that's it, I will set a first reading, right? Yeah, I'll set a motion to approve.
Second.
Any more comments? Um, hold the roll.
Mayor Petrolia?
No.
Mr. Frinkle?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
I'm gonna say yes for the first reading.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Okay, see, it's second reading.
Do, do you want us to put additional limitations that would provide assurances to you?
I would be interested.
Well, I mean, that's, I would have made a different decision had that been part of it, but, you know, Mr. Boylston kind of made the decision just to go with this, so.
No, 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 and I don't.
Excuse me, I, I made a motion, I didn't make.
No, but that was a motion to approve.
That's all, I just made a motion, just like as we all do.
Will you redo the motion?
I think, no, I don't think you need to, I think there's consensus, I think from at least four of you, that you are comfortable with staff rewriting this, because I think as written, I don't think it's gonna get past second reading, I think that's a fair assessment, but I think if we make some tweaks to provide you assurances, I think it could be better.
Great idea.
Fair enough.
Go for it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your willing.
All right, moving on to comments and inquiries on non-agenda items, thank you very much, good to see you. We'll start with the City Manager.
Nothing further, ma'am, thank you.
All right, City Attorney.
I've said enough, thank you.
You're what?
I've said enough.
Okay, very good, to the Commission.
I could say that.
Start, Mr. Boylston?
If, if you don't, if you don't mind, I would like to maybe possibly get over to the let's move.
I know.
I was, I was supposed to hand out city pins to Delray Rocks and the Delray Rush youth teams, thank you, for Chief Sims for taking care of that for me, 'cause I didn't get out in time. I still wanna make it over there. Do we need to set any direction for that historical marker for the community remembrance project, like to put on a future agenda?
I think they'll let us know, right?
We will simply wait to hear back from them when they're ready, we're prepared
to proceed.
I have affordable housing update, the Affordable Housing Committee is doing fantastic things, I just sat in my quarterly state meeting, but I won't, I won't bring that to you tonight, 'cause I know it's been a long night. I would, I would like to discuss the American Legion Building in a, in a.
Aren't we under?
We actually have a motion to dismiss hearing scheduled for tomorrow, I did forward everybody the Zoom information in case you're interested. I'm not opposed to scheduling a shade meeting, if, if that's what you're requesting, I would just prefer to do it at our April 5 meeting, so I can speak with our outside counsel, get her availability, and then we can schedule it.
I'll, I'll, I'll bring it back up then. I'm, I'm sure we've all heard the need for proactive approach to any road closures in our, in our city, as far as communicating, especially with George Bush, trying to help out the businesses and the residents, I believe, Mayor, you said your son even, you know, couldn't find his way. And, and, and lastly, in regards to the decision by Old School Square, I, I've communicated to our City Manager that I'm supporting, this is his decision, I'm supporting his decision. It is a little, it's a little heartbreaking to me, one of the reasons I moved to Delray, because we're very homegrown in everything that we do. I have no doubt that this organization from the Boca Museum, that they are experienced and capable, no doubt, and that they could be successful in Delray, no doubt. So could Travis, so could Miami Ballet, so could Cruisin' Amphitheater, they could all come here and be very successful, and how could, you know, how can you not? It's downtown Delray with, with, you know, with a historic building like that. I just think for me, it's heartbreaking, because we're so homegrown, we haven't had to look outside of our city, we've worked really hard, and if sometimes that meant we weren't gonna get quite as good a product, it was okay, it was okay, because it was us building and it was us doing it. So fully in support, and I think you've brought in an incredible team, I just need to say that's a little heartbreaking for me.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. The IEJI project, I'd like to thank Charlene and, and Mark for all of their hard work. It's been really difficult, because it's in combination with the other lynching that occurred in West Palm Beach, and we're a little ahead of the other section, talking about the other lynching, so I would encourage each of you, when they reach out, if you would please make time for them, it's a very interesting.
Pardon me for just one minute, Commissioner Boylston, before you go, just real quickly, did you guys at your housing meeting talk about the situation with the Polte Home and how those homes are, you know, brought on board or any of that, just, just briefly? Did you, were you able to do that?
Well, the last meeting was during our fire ops.
Right.
Dinner, but I believe that was, that was on the agenda to.
Okay, 'cause I, I would love to hear back from that.
Yeah.
Sounds good, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right, I'm sorry, I jumped right in. So I'd like to encourage each of you, if you would, to meet with them, I think you'll be very pleased with the work that they're doing and, and to support it, because if we don't know our history, we're bound to repeat it. Number two, I'd like to congratulate the Green Market and the inauguration of their SNAP program. It's an excellent way, I just wish that we could reach those who are a part of the SNAP program. There are flyers, if you are out and about in the community, perhaps we can drop them off at different places. I know that Renee's probably put them at Pompe Park, and I've put them in different places myself, so we were on the news in a positive manner for a change. And number three, I'm very disturbed about the status of our bus shelters as were exhibited tonight. Those are the kind of things that I feel the city has been falling down on, and there's so much going on, I don't know if it's because we don't have enough staff, or if it doesn't rise to the, the cream, that doesn't rise to the top, just, just gets neglected. I can't imagine a child waiting for a bus, not having shelter in, in the storm, so I don't know where all those bus stops were, how they got there in the first place, why they weren't maintained, just, just disturbing. And I'm also speaking about the state of some of our parks, I've been having a dialogue with the City Manager, I think I need to have a more direct dialogue with him, because there are some things that are dangerous, especially I speak to the Libby Wesley Park, if you haven't had an opportunity, I wish you would stop in, look around, and tell me if I'm off, off key about it. Number four, I've had several meetings in, in the past few weeks since our last meeting, and I'd like to thank everyone who has taken the opportunity and time to work with City Manager and me to further some items that have been languishing, and I really appreciate the hard work and knowledge that the staff has, has exhibited it. I believe fifth and lastly, maybe not lastly, but I only have six items, the charter requirement that we have two meetings and a workshop, if we don't schedule another meeting, we will be going against our charter, unless.
This month?
The City Manager has some input, I talked to you about it Monday, but you didn't mention it, so.
We do have.
You didn't, I must.
We have a workshop meeting next week, I wonder if we can just tag on.
First and third, we don't have an election, that's, we're getting, having a problem, because we had our organizational meeting scheduled for the end of the month, but there's no election, so once we moved it, we eliminated that second meeting.
So my input, of course, is typically first and third Tuesday of each month, that's common practice, we will work to get us to that place in that regard, but quite frankly, as far as. We will work to get us to that place in that regard, but quite frankly, as far as the charter clarification, that is a legal question. So my understanding initially that a workshop meeting and a regular meeting would constitute two meetings and we would be okay. But again, you were thinking that it has to be two regular meetings and a, and a workshop meeting that would be not qualified.
That's what I thought the city attorney said to me. Now, if I'm in error, I apologize.
My understanding is that because you have two meetings, they don't necessarily have to be two regular meetings. You can have one regular meeting, one workshop meeting, and that will take care of it.
Okay.
I think she's looking it up right now.
You, you do this to me every time.
I'm sorry.
We close up my computer and then we have this discussion. So yes, it is in the charter. I thought, the local rule is what specifies the two, two meetings plus a workshop. I think the charter just talks about just the two meetings. Oh, is this it? If you want to keep talking, I'll find it and all.
I would gladly. Well, I can, I can say my last item. I attended the League of Cities for, in February. There were so many items, I'm not going to take our time tonight, it's almost eight o'clock, to tell you, there's some exciting things, there are some not exciting things happening. My main thing that I, I think I'm going to start doing an email. I don't think that's preventing the sunshine law. If anyone wants to pull it, then they can, public record. But I'm really excited about the fact that the legislature is allowing any time a commission or council or whatever, whoever meets about cybersecurity, you can do it in the shade.
That was a, that was a new proposal.
Okay.
So section 3.12 of the charter says the commission shall meet regularly at least twice a month at times and place that the commission prescribes by rule or otherwise. So then you look at our local rules and our local rules indicate that we meet the first and third Tuesdays of each month for regular meetings. So I guess technically we're in violation of our local rules.
All right, well, do you want to go ahead and schedule the meeting?
It's, it's up to you. You know, there's always things that we can discuss. Things that need to be noticed, they're not going to make it in time if we, if we have a meeting for next week or.
Reason that I was, I know, not next week, I'm talking about the third week. The, we had talked about doing, instead of that Thursday, the Tuesday.
And we can't. That would be a violation because the organizational meeting has to be on the last Thursday.
Can we not keep the organizational meeting that following month? Do we have to do the, do the organizational meeting? We could just have another meeting on that, that following.
An organizational meeting on the 15th of March, two weeks from today.
The organizational meeting on, in April.
For the fifth.
That's what we currently have scheduled.
Correct. So why can't we just have a regular meeting of the organizational meeting on the, the third Tuesday?
You could, you could have a regular meeting on.
That's what I, we should do it. If we need it, we should do it. If we have to do.
I'm sure we can find something.
We can probably do one thing. Make it very quick. It'll be the quickest meeting we've ever had.
I have something we could do.
Hmm?
I have something we could do.
Okay.
So that would be Tuesday, March 15th, two weeks from today.
Third.
That would be the third Tuesday.
So it would be the.
Tuesday, March 15th is the third Tuesday of this month. So therefore, two weeks from today, the second regular meeting for the month of March 2022 would be the case.
Or if you wanted to, we could, we have a meeting next week. We can tie on a regular meeting on the front end or the back end of that. It's probably what Commissioner Frankel wants. Deputy Vice Mayor Frankel wants.
I think we, we may be having an executive session that day too. So I don't know if you want to do the executive session, the workshop and then a meeting.
Yeah.
You do, okay.
Let's do it.
We're all here anyway.
So it says the second regular meeting during the month of March shall take place immediately after the annual organizational meeting.
Oh, my gosh.
Good luck with that.
And the swearing in of the new commissioner. I'm going to work on these.
We don't even have a swearing in of.
They're still swearing in.
Right.
It makes it so messy on and off. You know why? Because we never used to have an off year. When we actually did these rules, it was every other, every year we had an election. So it didn't matter because it was like either the first cycle or the second cycle. So we always, so now that we're on three years, when we don't have an election cycle, it really puts us in a mess.
May I pose a consideration? So this is, I think, where a couple of you all were going. So we're meeting next week. We have an executive session, 2:30 to 3:30, I believe, then workshop meeting, 3:30. We can, the idea of a regular meeting, March 8th, at the end of the workshop meeting. We have several items lined up. We can simply divide that, a couple for the workshop meeting, a couple for the regular meeting. With that satisfied requirement, everybody will be here and we'll be fine legally, correct?
Sure.
Okay. So if there's consensus to proceed in that regard, I'll be more than happy to make arrangements. Generally speaking, Madam City Clerk, we were contemplating four workshop items. Anyhow, we're now looking at two workshop meeting items and two regular meeting items for March 8th. We'll proceed that way. So the workshop meeting will then take place beginning at 3:30 and we may have one discussion item so that we can proceed with a regular meeting at 4 o'clock for the three other items at week from today. Thereby, meeting the requirement for two regular meetings, one being today that we're now concluding, the following will be one week from today. Satisfying that requirement as well as the requirement for a workshop.
The meeting that follows the, the organizational meeting, which we wouldn't be having, so I don't know if that's a problem.
No, that one that gives you latitude, it just says it can't occur before the last Thursday, so there's latitude and we were just going to do that.
All right, and then we'll work on changing that so that it makes sense for what we're dealing with now.
I think it's in the charter, so we have to look to see if we need a referendum.
Figure it out.
Otherwise, ladies and gentlemen, consensus, consensus for March 8th, as I've outlined?
Yes.
Very well. Thank you, ma'am.
Moving on to. Wait, go ahead. Did you want, do you have anything to say?
I do, I have a couple of things.
Go right ahead.
I'm sure Lynn would have told us, but she turned off her computer. Ma'am pleads guilty to LGBTQ crosswalk, crosswalk damage in Delray Beach.
This is new?
Sentencing will be coming up, uh, May 31st.
He pled to the court. He didn't want to accept the state's offer. I believe the state's offer included jail time. So he pled to the court and sentencing has been deferred. Ms. Warren was present at court today to represent the city. She did provide our invoices for the monies that we spent and just made it clear that, that we were participating in it, not so far as the sentence, but as to the rest of the issue.
Okay.
That was good news.
Yep.
Second, fire ops. Chief Tommy, hats off to you. I thought it was amazing. Chief Sims, if you got a, a police hat, I'll wear it at the next meeting, but, you know, Chief Tommy was very generous and appreciate all the swag. Fashion Week was very, very nice. The big party in Old School Square was great and the tennis tournament was amazing, according to Mr. Barron, record turnout. I think it's very important to recognize the sponsors. Sponsors included the city of Delray Beach, the Delray Beach CRA, Delray Garden Center, Blue Gallery, Menon, the Ray Hotel, Lionfish, the Delray Beach Market, Johnny Brown's and Ember Grill. You know, it's kind of, I don't.
Vitacost?
I'm sorry? Well, that's a national sponsor. I'm talking local.
Oh, local, okay, all right.
The foot traffic I see downtown in Pineapple Grove, the hotel stays, the restaurant, shopping. It's kind of disappointing to me that more people aren't involved because they're getting the benefit of it, but, you know, the, the city, obviously, and the CRA are, are major sponsors, but it was just a great 10 days and enjoyed it and look forward to next year.
And why, by the way, also, Menon was also the sponsor for, one of the sponsors for the, the fashion show.
Fashion Week, yeah. They're very generous.
They actually use their upstairs rose water for the end, end one.
Very, very generous.
Yes, absolutely.
Madam Mayor, before we continue to proceed, so Deputy Vice Mayor Frankel just mentioned fire ops, the experience we had February 11th. So Chief Tommy and I, you and I were discussions regarding a video, a brief video presentation we would like to offer publicly during the upcoming meeting. We would, that's exactly where I'm going. So we'll make arrangements to make that an agenda item for next week. We can do so at the very beginning of the meeting.
That would be at the regular meeting, please.
That's exactly correct. The March 8th regular meeting portion, so we will make arrangements to that effect and thank you for bringing up that point.
Should I wear my hat again next week?
Not a bad idea. So Chief Tommy, duly noted, we'll make arrangements.
Commissioner Cassell?
Great, thanks. So a couple of things, do you remember the dog statue?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Mr. Beal reached out because he has a great idea for a location. I don't know if you spoke with Mr. Beal, Jeff, regarding that, but he's thinking that little park strip, Artist Alley and Third, sort of behind Bednars. There's a planter with two little trees in it and he thinks that would be an amazing location. Lots? Ms. Johnson?
She doesn't like that.
I know, but you didn't want it in front of the office. Go ahead.
If there's no business, it does not have a disagreement with it. That was the only reason.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that location?
Certainly.
We should probably take that to the art board.
Yeah, and I, I was going to also say that there's a dog grooming place right there.
Exactly, it's a perfect location and it's very colorful.
Salty dog or something, right?
Yes. So there we go, that was super easy, check. So congratulations were given to us by the TPA regarding our Vision Zero resolution.
Commissioner, I believe that Missy was standing up.
She was tired, she wants to go home.
She was, okay. I think she wanted to make a comment.
Does she want the dog statue elsewhere?
We can find a place for it on Northeast Third. I'm happy to do that. That little park is changing significantly as part of the project.
So it won't fit there any longer?
Well, we're going to have some lighted pineapples and some other.
The dog might not go with the lighted pineapples.
All right, you, you, we'll leave it in your hands.
Fabulous, I appreciate that, Missy. I think it needs a home. It's been, you know, alone too long. So I did say that the TPA congratulated us on our Vision Zero resolution, Anthea. And then, so it's something I'm interested in working on. Kent's not here, but I've met with him a couple of times regarding the low-wake zone, something you were very interested in, and he had five different methods of approaching it. And I think he found the one that's actually going to work. I'm going to let him share that with everybody at some point. It's very exciting. Is that him coming in? Okay, fabulous. So Kent is brilliant and he approached every different angle and then found one which involves non-motorized boat docks on private property would necessarily result in the slowing down of the boats. But I didn't, I'm not asking you to get into that. What I was asking my fellow commissioners for, one of the ideas he had was a manatee habitat, which would also necessitate the slowing down. But because we don't need to implement a manatee habitat and we could potentially, you could potentially resolve this with these non-motorized boat launches, that's not, not necessarily something we have to do, but something I'm thinking we might want